Good morning, everybody. Happy Earth Day. I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2023 Planning Commission's special meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda this morning is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here.
And I'll note for the record that we did have an appointment of a new planning commissioner last Wednesday by the City Council. Commissioner Yodowitz is not here today.
Well, we look forward to having him with us on Tuesday. We're joined today by Community Development Department staff Director David Loyah, Deputy Director Jennifer Dart, and we also have Deputy Director Savage helping us with our video feed and technical support. Next, we have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are on the agenda. This time is provided for the public to speak on the agenda items. We will not be opening public comment on each item individually. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda for today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Please feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Hello to staff and commissioners. My name is James Becker. It's been seventeen months since community engagements were jump-started in December 2022. Emerging from the fog of COVID-driven sparsely non-attended engagements and official city meetings, the Community Development Department director promised that you are not late for the party, the party is just getting started. The community -- at that time, committee -- community members were presented with a draft plan full of panglossing ideas of a perfect high-density infill and espoused, "We got this, don't worry." Also promised at that time was to be able to work out details and make it better through community input, a chance to address placement of tall structures within the existing fabric of Arcata, a chance to question a road expansion that crushes the promise of rails-to-trails and, yes, a linear park through the heart of the Creamery District. Community and committee members have offered meaningful edits to a draft that was originally emerged from a private consulting program and read like a pitch for infill developers. Edits have primarily been branded as non-comporting. Today, many U.S. cities are seeking out existing undeveloped corridors to establish linear parks. Sorry, got these right. Sorry. The question is not, "Will infill be built?" The question is, "When it will be built and what it will look like?" Many people have spoken on citing setbacks and step backs of future infill in relation to existing neighborhoods. In addition to the Gateway District, infill opportunity zones exist throughout Arcata, and more will be addressed in two years. Will such structures up to seven stories respect the quality of life of existing neighborhoods? Or will solar shading be ignored for maximum density infill? What will be the function of L Street, a primary active transportation corridor running through the heart of the Creamery District from Alliance Road to Seminole Boulevard? Will open spaces be reduced to truck routes, segmenting wildlife corridors and wetland complexes? Or will it be enhanced into a linear park? The Arcata Transportation Safety Committee has stated numerous times the greater use of a linear park. The local Sierra Club North group has recognized the value of these open spaces and endorses the designation of L Street Quarter as a linear park. Nearly 700 people and growing have signed a petition in support of a linear park and to abandon the K&L Cutlet. Across the nation, rail banking has served a vast transportation networks. Today, many U.S. cities are seeking out undeveloped corridors to establish linear parks. The L Street pathway is the heart of an active transportation artery from Cal Poly South to Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary. The corridor is a vital segment of Humboldt Bay Trail and a link between the future great Redwood Trail and the Anymaries Trail running from Arcata to Blue Lake. As a hub for numerous users and pathways, the L Street is an ideal location for a linear park. You know, please do not abandon this greenway in favor of a road expansion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Kevin Johnson, and I farm one of the few small agricultural parcels in the City of Arcata. When I purchased my property 25 years ago, there were three veggie farms in the Arcata area. Today, I counted over 25 farms in the Arcata area, multiple CSAs, market gardens producing veggies, eggs, meats, seeds, fruits, flowers, herbs, and more. This is one new farm per year. It's a remarkable testimony to a community that has a strong interest and support for local food production. When I purchased my ag property, I paid agricultural prices for it and shortly after began planting my orchard, which currently has 250 apple trees, whose fruit I market wholesale to local grocers and juice bars. When we protect agricultural land, we protect agricultural land prices for new farmers to Converting and rezoning agricultural land, no matter how small a parcel, makes it that much harder to afford land to farm due to land speculation. The Planning Commission must continue to support and protect agricultural land. This has been an important value for our community and was recently confirmed by the passage of Measure A. With Measure A, we taxed ourselves to continue to preserve and protect agricultural and open-space lands. That is the strongest statement any community can make. What we do within the city with our agricultural land matters. Arcata needs to continue to be a leader in agricultural land protection and be the barrier to conversion through solid protective policies. Nothing is more sustainable or climate-friendly than locally grown food. Please do not rezone any AE or AR lands. This is a very slippery slope. Please do not weaken or remove language in LU1 that protects agricultural lands from conversion. Protect these resource lands for our highest and best use, which is farming. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. Happy Earth Day, everyone. Thanks for being here so early in the morning. My name is Joanne McGary. I come often to these chambers to wax philosophical often. Other people do their homework and get into the details, but I like to step back often and ask you to join me in that. My mantra daily is, "Remember the past, be in the present, live for the future." So today, on Earth Day and in this discussion that you're having, be present, be in the present, but please think about the future and the future generations. On this Earth Day, I'm wearing my Greta Thunberg School Strike for the Planet, and she talks about the future and her generation and her children and grandchildren and what the world will be. I know we're just talking about 20 years ahead and a plan that we're going to decide upon, but as the previous speaker, Kevin, spoke, remember the past and the beauty of what our community has been, and think about that as we move into the future. Oftentimes, you know, the future, people kind of compare it, do you want Hobbit Land or, you know, Blade Runner type of concept? And we don't need to go those extremes necessarily, but I really do think we want livable, humane, and thriving communities, and if that means keeping ag land there, great. If it means building grounded-style housing so that people aren't isolated high up, it also just means getting people to really develop community and not just having separate entities, think about their own self-interest. We need to really come together. As I said the other day to the City Council, braiding creates strength, and we need to braid a lot of these ideas that are being discussed together so that it increases the strength of our community, whether it's circulation, public transit, open space, L Street, housing, you know, high-rises. We really need to think down the road without a car, and please do that in all your thing, especially for this Earth Day. Just remember, she's our mother. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Thanks for your comments.
My name's Patricia Kamianika, and I'm going to cede my time to Fred Wise.
Welcome, commissioners and staff. The -- I want to separate the product that you're working on, the process, and the perception, perception to the public. For the product, I greatly respect what you're doing. I can disagree. We can agree to disagree many times. I can agree to not disagree many times, but you're doing a lot of hard work. The terms of the process, as you know, I review the transcriptions of the meeting. The last meeting, April 11th, there is a motion regarding L and K Street Cutlet. In looking at the transcription, it's clear that the motion changed during the process of the discussion. It changed drastically. It's a half an hour. I did the transcription. The video is on arcata1.com currently. I urge you to watch it. It is my belief, and only you can decide for yourselves, that the discussion prior to the vote from Commissioners Tagney, Figueroa, Mayor Simmons, Lehman, all reflected one thing, but the motion reflected something different. Commissioner Mayor brought up a proposal. The Chair deferred to David Loyah for some suggestions about how to word it. He gave three options. He did not acknowledge Commissioner Mayor's option. Later, it was acknowledged, okay? As an illustration of what I'm saying, Commissioner Simmons gave the motion, the second, or gave the second on the motion, and then, when the vote was taken, changed his vote to "nay." I think that the motion was not understood, and I think, I believe, if you look at the transcription or look at the video, you'll see this. The real question was, are we talking about L Street and K Street Cutlet as an option or as a recommendation? Okay? If it's an option, it's something to be considered at a later date. If it's a recommendation, then we're moving forward on this. It started, the motion started as an option and kind of morphed into a recommendation. What you do is up to you, but I think you should be aware that, in my opinion, the motion was not understood, and there's evidence of it in the transcription, and specifically with Commissioner Simmons. In terms of perception, none of these things work well with perception. It looks like things are kind of being railroaded through. I spoke before that, I said, "There's no evidence." I didn't say that you're not listening to us. I mean, I want to make that really clear. I believe you are listening to the public, and I appreciate that. I mean, not me personally, but just on a general basis. But the perception is that it's not happening. If the commission or staff could say, "We're going to discuss," for instance, what Kevin just brought up or what Dave Mazur brought up, "If we're going to discuss these zoning options in July," that would go a long way towards helping the public perception. Right now, it looks like the public is speaking, and it's going to a black hole or a trashcan. Again, the transcript is on arcata1.com. I also have objection to the comparison of Foster Avenue extension to the L Street Road. They have as a similarity that roads take a long time to think about, develop, get funding for, et cetera, and City Engineer Net you made that clear. Other than that, there's no similarity. Foster Avenue was built on raw land. The development there that's occurred there is pretty clear. L Street is built up. It's a vibrant community right now. Anything that goes there disturbs what's there, not creates what's there. I found an aerial photograph from 1980 of the area, which shows the area before Foster Avenue was built. I have two articles on my website, a longer one and a shorter one, you know, you can look at that. But the idea that, you know, Foster Avenue took 30 years is irrelevant to what's happening on L Street. And to, if you know Andrea Tuttle, she had a letter back in February a year bit ago. It's on arcata1.com. It's a great letter, in my opinion. I think very highly of her at a meeting with some landowners and David Loyah, and Jim was there also. She said, "If you think the next 20 years in Arcata is going to be anything like the last 20 years, you're, fill in the blank, you're crazy, you're nuts. It's just not happening. The next 20 years are going to be so different from the last 20 years." So to say that Foster Avenue took thirty years, I think, I use the word irrelevant, it's a meaningless conversation. Look at what L Street is doing now, and that the idea that things might not change for 10 or 20 years, as soon as this plan is adopted, someone can build a six-story building on L Street, and that defeats the linear park for that section where that building is built. Your planners, think of all this stuff. Again, I apologize. I don't mean to tell you that you're doing your jobs. I respect what you're doing, but consider all this stuff. There's more than meets the eye here. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Do we have any speakers online, David?
We do. Go ahead, Colin.
This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. We provided you with some written comments yesterday, and so hopefully you had a chance to look at those. I wanted to primarily address what I think is maybe the biggest sort of decision point on your agenda today. And CRTP believes that it's very important that projects which meet the objective standards which are being developed as part of the Gateway Form-Based Code be subject to ministerial or by right approval. The point of the objective standard is to ensure that projects conform to community priorities, and the ministerial approval is to ensure that projects can actually be built and not subjected to what I think have been sometimes unproductive and certainly years-long reviews of major projects such as we've seen in the past. We do understand the desire to have public meetings on large projects, even when those projects will be subject to ministerial approval, but we would urge caution as to the process because, you know, the primary result of most public hearings is, you know, the airing of subjective opinions, which is fine, but when the question at hand is applying objective standards, that could end up being a somewhat frustrating procedure. We also provided some comments on the proposed Community Benefits Program, and I won't go through all of those right now. I do want to call out that we think it's important to include a benefit to encourage the unbundling or separation of parking and residential rents, and also that there should be no benefits that encourage setting aside additional right-of-way for off-street parking, but that instead there should be benefits in the program to discourage the provision of excess parking. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Colin.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Hello, planning commissioners. I have brought to your attention a few important topics regarding agricultural land that are not represented in the bike rack. Am I correct in assuming that the commission does not have concern with these items, or am I as confused as everyone else by this process? Specifically, I am referring to the following issues found in the land use and growth management sections of the plan. One being that prime agricultural land is being recommended for rezoning to RH. Two, that prime agricultural land north and west of the city is remaining in our sphere of influence, even after Director Loyah explained that he wouldn't be, he would be interpreting this, as does LAFCO, meaning eventual growth areas for the city. And three, protective language for agricultural lands found in our previous plan being deleted. These are important deviations from our previous planning strategies, and I feel these changes are putting all of these lands at a high risk of conversion in the future. It would be very difficult for me to comprehend why this would be, would not be a concern of this planning commission. I have attended every meeting pertaining to resource lands and have yet to hear any significant discussion on these issues. Please be so kind to resolve any confusion that I or the public is experiencing about the question whether or not the commission finds these changes concerning, and if so, when these items will be discussed. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Go ahead, Jane. Jane, can you unmute? There you go.
Yeah, I finally found it. It finally appeared. First, I want to thank you all for agreeing to three public planning commission meetings in a row two days apart, but I want to note that it makes it difficult for the public to keep up, and I can't imagine what's going on for you guys. And I want to second Fred and Jim's comments, as well as the ones we just heard and the ones regarding agricultural lands. On pages eight through 10, you have staff proposed options for selecting the level of administrative review. I'm presuming this only applies to the Gateway Area Plan. If not, please let the public know. Also, I want to point out that you are not required to select these three options as presented. First, it's not clear if the square feet apply to building square feet or lot square feet. This needs to be clarified. Two, you have the option of having all proposed projects, regardless of size, go through the public planning commission review, as is currently the case. Smaller projects would clearly require less planning commission time to ensure that you can evaluate them against the city's objective standards. If it's that simple that the zoning commission can do it, or the zoning administrator can do it, certainly you can. That's the only way to ensure public review. Even the option two, zoning administrator plus public hearing, there is no guarantee the public will have proper notice because zoning commissioner hearings do not seem to appear on the live meetings portal. Would this be changed to provide public notice? Also, I want to remind you that staff has not yet weighed out a plan for L Street as a linear park so the City Council can actually consider the alternative to one-way L Street. Finally, I want to remind you that you have not yet scheduled a meeting to discuss the implications of sea level rise for intensive residential building in the coastal zone and the Gateway Area subject to sea level rise. Happy Earth Day, and thank you for your consideration. Good luck. There's a lot of work. Thank you for doing it.
Thanks for your comments, Jane. Thanks for your comments, Jane.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I understand that ministerial approval is a linchpin of the plan to attract developers to build here. And according to the table on packet page 10, and I know it's just a suggestion, but the city is suggesting that the zoning administrator should be able to approve without public input. And I read it to mean buildings up to 20,000 square feet and 50 feet tall. I don't know if the zoning administrator should have that much power, based on results. The fence at 11th and M Streets violates three city codes. Community development was notified by the public before the fence went in, but they did not stop the builder from installing it. There are problems with the tractor supply development, and there's a drive-through going in at Dutch Brothers on Gentoli. That is in opposition to guidelines established by the planning commission. What assurance will residents have that objective standards will be followed? Is an appeal to the planning commission a sufficient remedy? Will an appeal to planning commission cost residents money, as it does to the city council? Thanks for considering these important topics. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, speaker.
Hi, good morning. This is Sean Armstrong with Tulley Fog Farm. Some of you hopefully received an email that I sent to SALT, the grant funding agency for this work. And SALT is the state's agricultural land conservation organization. So bring this up, because Tulley Fog Farm has been in the bottoms farming for 16 years. And we've been farming one of the pieces of land that's proposed to rezone from agricultural general to residential high density. So we've been on that land for four years. And I'm asking you to please make a motion to change the zoning of the Ag General Land proposal back to propose, just to keep it as Ag General. And additionally, ask you to make a motion to remove the strikeout that would allow land to be annexed and then developed for farming land, or sorry, developed for residential land. There's a strikeout that currently prohibits the rezone of Ag land. And I'd like you to keep that, that language. I point out that the city council has voted numerous times to protect this particular chunk of land, these two parcels of Ag General Land. It's always been part of the voted-for open space and green belts. And the planning commission has similarly voted many times on this as well. So it seems like there's a long history of public votes that would say preserve this land as Ag. And I don't see any public interest in rezoning Ag land. Today's Earth Day, and there's a farmer's market going on, that's the oldest in the state. I don't see any public support for this action. I doubt you support it either. So please, just make the motion and fix that problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. Okay, that's all we have online.
Well, if someone's here, why don't they come to the lectern?
I'm not the technological whiz. I wish I were. I have a little flower farm on the corner of Q Street and Foster. And everybody that walks by thanks me for putting out flowers, for making the Ag land even prettier than it is when it's just Ag land. And I can't imagine that those people who walk by every day want it to become a high-rise apartment across the street from us. I mean, Q Street's an industry. It provides jobs for people. And, you know, it makes some noise, and we are perfectly willing to put up with that. The Ag land that Troy owns and that we lease is beautiful land. And it's rare to have something like that, so close, so walkably close to town. The dairy made some modifications and made it so that it's actually a place where people can walk and pick fruit on the way. There's just, there's no reason to call that Ag land infill. And I think you'll regret it. I mean, I understand you're not going to pave paradise and put up a parking lot, but fairly close. If it's a multi-story, high-rise building that blocks the sun from all the people walking by and the flowers I grow, I think you'll just regret it. And I don't think that the general plan needs that. I know that if we had continued to be annexed, as we were a couple of years ago, and then we fought it, and we paid the money, and we got unannexed to the city, I'm pretty sure if we'd been annexed, we'd also be zoned as high-density. And all of that area that people walk in and love would have become the same high-density residential that so many other places in town are going to be. And I just think taking Ag land and doing that is really, really wrong. And I think if the city had good intentions, they just would have cleaned up that creek bed, made the path along Foster Road nice. They could have shown over the last 15 years that they actually cared about that area. Instead of letting it get deteriorated, we've asked dozens of times to have it cleaned up. And instead, they just waited and waited until now. They're going to rezone the whole area and put in multi-story housing. And I object. I object. I think Ag land is way too important for that. And I so appreciate what you do. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all the public comment we have.
All right. Appreciate everyone who came to our meeting or called in. Appreciate all the comments.
Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
Is this an opportunity to ask for a little clarity on the rezoning discussion in terms of it not showing up in the bike rack as one of the speakers presented?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. I wanted to comment on that as well. So the bike rack is the policies and proposals for change that the commission makes that you don't get to in any given meeting on a particular subject. The commissioners, for the public's interest, the commissioners are hearing you. They're reading your letters, they're reading your emails. And they're using that in part as the basis for their decisions about what policies they want to change and are putting those forward for discussion. And so you may not see your direct comments as a public member added to the bike rack, except as they are brought forward through the planning commissioners, through sort of the representative process that we have. So that's where you'll see those bike rack issues come up. And then to address specific changes to the land use element, the map, et cetera, those would be suitable topics for the second part of our meeting today, where we're going to get into the land use element bike rack.
Yes, thank you.
Judith?
Yeah, this is a question, but also preceded by a comment, which is, in my original comments on the land use element, I had several comments about the agricultural zoning aspects. And of course, there were the site-by-sites that all ended up in the bike rack. We never got to any of the comments about agricultural zoning that I made, in part because staff didn't place those comments on our priority list. And we had only, I think, two or two and a half hours for that meeting. So that means that almost by definition, those things weren't dealt with, despite the fact that that's where these issues hit the ground. And I think going forward, as a process issue, decisions about what gets put in which category for our agendized meetings might be crucial, because if we have a time limit that will just physically not allow us to address those things, it basically means they get pushed way to the back. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to make sure that some of these issues that are important, just because they end up at the end of the agenda, don't automatically get stuffed into the bike rack. And, you know, that is, I think, an amendment we need to make to our process. Either that, or the commission as a whole needs to weigh in about where items are categorized. The division of items between the consent calendar and the pitch calendar, and then where they come in that order is kind of arbitrary at this point. So I would just ask commissioners what we can do about that, because it does, in this case, seem that the items that many members of the public care about most strongly are those that we didn't end up addressing at all. And I understand that today might be an opportunity to do that. It certainly won't be as we go forward for all of our elements. Comment, question, do we have any suggestions about how better to do that?
Thanks, Judith. Do any other commissioners have observations or questions about that? Okay, I'm going to move into our business item section of our agenda. We have two business items today. First, business item A is to approve planning commission minutes from our special meeting of April 11, 2023. Do we have a motion to adopt those minutes?
I'll make a motion to adopt those minutes.
We have a motion. Does anyone want to second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Can I, I believe Commissioner Mayor did not vote, do you?
Oh, sorry, Judith.
Aye.
Thanks, David. Thank you, Judith. Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is to consider a recommendation on the general plan updates and the Gateway Area Plan Form-Based Codes. Can we begin with a staff report, please?
Yeah, I'll be brief. We do have our consultant, Ben Noble, who's helping with writing the Form-Based Code, here to present today. So I just want to give a general outline of the work that we'll be doing today on the first part of the meeting, and then talk in super brief about the second part of the meeting. So today, we are going to get into more detail about guidance from the planning commission for the Form-Based Code. A couple of key decision points that we need to make here relate to the permitting process, the ministerial pathways, how we structure them. You know, we've tried to capture what we've heard from the, you know, the public, that there's a desire to have some smaller projects, you know, be streamlined through over-the-counter reviews, zoning clearance-type review. And then bigger projects should be reviewed at the planning commission level through a hearing process. Those would still be ministerial, is the way that we're presenting them. But it outlines a recommendation for a three-tiered structure, depending on the size of the project. Now, we've given a, you know, an example of how those could be split up, how the sizes could be split up. We certainly want to get input on, you know, if that's the right direction. There's some refining and some honing that we can do on, you know, on how those projects will separate out, because there's a variety of different types of projects that might come forward. And so that's the first piece we'd like input on. The second piece we'll go into is the Community Benefits Program. We've got a, what I would call a rough draft of the Community Benefits Program, based on the work that all of the community, the committees, and the, sorry, commission has done to date. So we have a proposal for you to look at. And again, we view this as a draft of how the proposal, how the Community Benefits Program could come together. And we'd like you to weigh in on sort of the structure of that to make sure that we're hitting the right structure. There's still some bedding that we need to do in terms of, do the point systems work out appropriately? And then we will also need to, once we've adopted sort of this draft version, need to do an economic analysis to make sure that by requesting these community benefits be a part of our permitting process, that we don't, in fact, stymie development inadvertently by making the cost of that development too high. And so there's a little bit of balancing we'll do there. So we've gone through a couple of different iterations of getting closer and closer to what a Community Benefits Program is. This is a draft of a Community Benefits Program that we'd like you to weigh in on. We'll take a break at that point. We're expecting this work to take between an hour, an hour and a half. Take a break at that point, just to regroup. And then when we come back, we're going to get into the bike rack issues. We can address the comments that Commissioner Mayor brought up, you know, and talk a little bit about process, and then sort of launch into the bike rack and try and get through those materials. So that's the overview of what we hope to accomplish today. And I'm going to turn it over to Ben to walk us through some presentation, and then a little bit of facilitation with the chair on discussions around that. Ben, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, David. So I have a very short presentation. The commission has a lot on the agenda this morning, so I don't want to take up too much of your time to go over the details, but do want to just provide an overview first of the permit, permitting process concepts that we've shared with you and have asked for some feedback on. So, and to clarify, this is for the Gateway Area only. And with the proposed approach, there are two types of approvals, general types of approvals that are presented, a ministerial and a discretionary type of approval. And a ministerial approval is sometimes called a by-right approval. And that means that an application is approved or denied based solely on conformance with objective standards. So it does not involve subjective judgment. It's purely, does the project meet an objective standard? Discretionary, on the other hand, the review authority may use subjective judgment to consider project conformance with city policies and permit findings. And your current design review and use permit process is an example of a discretionary approval. So in the proposed approach, a ministerial approval would be permitted for a project that meets certain criteria. So that project must provide housing, whether in a mixed-use project or as a standalone residential project. It must provide the minimum required community benefits for whatever tier it is participating in. And it also must comply with all Gateway Code standards and other applicable standards of the municipal code. And for projects that would be subject to a discretionary process, the city would rely on the existing use permit and design review process for those. And in terms of a ministerial or a by-right approval, there are different review authorities that can conduct that review and make the determination that the project is consistent with applicable objective standards. And so we've presented three options for different review authorities that I'm going to describe in the next few slides. So the first option is a ministerial approval that would be approved with a zoning certificate. And the way that this would work is the planning staff would review and act on the application. If the planning commission and city decides for all projects to be subject to a zoning certificate, so relying just on this option, we envision that there would be an opportunity for a notice of a pending decision for larger projects. But for all zoning certificate projects, there would be no public hearing. The city would evaluate conformance with objective standards, and that would be the sole basis to approve or deny the application. A decision of the zoning administrator would be appealed, or I'm sorry, the decision on the zoning certificate by city staff could be appealed to the zoning administrator. And that appeal would be limited to determination of project conformance with objective standards. So the second option for a ministerial approval would involve the zoning administrator acting on the application at a notice public hearing. But like option one, the decision to approve or deny the application would be based solely on conformance with objective standards. A decision could be appealed to the planning commission with the appeal limited to the determination of project conformance with objective standards. And the third option is similar to option two, but with the planning commission acting as the review, review authority on the application at a notice public hearing, with the planning commission being the body that would make the determination that the project conforms with objective standards, and the review would be limited to that question. And so a planning commission decision could be appealed to the city council with the appeal limited to the determination of project conformance with objective standards. So if the planning commission recommends a, using multiple options, so having different review authorities, having a tiered approach where some projects are acted on by the, with a zoning certificate, others with a zoning administrator, and others with a planning commission, that would require identifying thresholds for which projects require which tier or which review authority. And so in the packet materials for today, we put forward an example of what that could look like. So in this example, projects on a site that's less than 10,000 square feet with a building height of less than 40 feet, for example, would be, could be approved with a zoning certificate. Projects on sites that are more than 20,000 sque, 20,000 square feet but have a height less than a specified amount, this shows is 50 feet, that's something that would be approved by the zoning administrator at a noticed public hearing. And then the largest projects on sites that are more than 2,000, 20,000 square feet and taller buildings, more than 50 feet, for example, that's something would be reviewed by the planning commission at a noticed public hearing. So this is put forward, I think, as exam, as an example of what this could look like, with certainly rooms for, room for clarification or revisions if desired by the planning commission. So in terms of our requested feedback on this subject, I think first, we're asking for the planning commission to confirm the desire for ministerial review for residential projects that comply with design standards and provide community benefits. I think as one of your members of the public noticed, or noted that there is an alternative approach, which would be to require, as the city does now, a discretionary approval for these sorts of projects. And if the planning commission confirms that a ministerial process is allowed, the, the next question would be, is a tiered approach for ministerial review authority preferred as we are recommending based on public and planning commission prior input? And then what feedback, if any, you have on the different thresholds for these different tiers? Which projects should be approved by, or reviewed by staff, which by the zoning administrator, which by the planning commission, and to confirm that all three review authorities should be involved in the decision-making on these, on these projects? So that concludes the portion of the presentation about permitting. And I do have a question for the chair and for David. Do we want to pause now to discuss these questions, or do we want to continue with the presentation on the community benefits program?
We'd like to pause now and have a chance to discuss at the commission level.
Okay. Great. And would you like me to stop sharing my screen? Is that better?
Um, I think it's good to have those questions up for just a moment.
Okay. All right.
And if I could make one clarifying comment, the, the objective standards that we're referring to here, in case it wasn't clear, are going to be those objective standards that are in the form-based code. And to address a question that came up of a community member, this does, this discussion that we're having today applies only to the form-based code in the gateway area. And so I just wanted to be clear on that. I also wanted to note that the zoning administrator hearing would be for projects that were greater than 10,000 but less than 20,000. I think we misspoke and said greater than 20,000. So just, that's what the, the slide said. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Peter, one, one second. Joanne, I love the flag. Could you move it east a couple chairs so the gentleman in the back's view isn't blocked? Thank you so much. Go ahead, Peter.
David, are there any plans to extend this beyond the gateway program? Extend this ministerial review to other parts of the city?
Um, I think that would be a discussion for a later date. I think, given where the state is going, it's probably a wise decision to, to evaluate for, in particular, other opportunity zones, or, or areas where we think that the state will preempt.
You, you sort of preempted my question, but I was wondering if you could just give a quick bit of context about the Housing Accountability Act, because I think it's necessary for why we're talking about this.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll, I'll try and keep this really brief. We've had entire planning commission staff reports addressed to this before, but there are a number of laws that have come out over the past several years, about the past five years. The Housing Accountability Act has been strengthened. The Department of Housing and Community Development has had a whole branch developed for enforcement. They went from having about three people on an enforcement team to enforce the Housing Accountability Act to, you know, upwards of 20. I don't know the exact numbers, but several people enforcing that statewide. In addition, there have been, you know, we've all heard of the builder's remedy that's come out. There's the AB 2011, which allows for principally permitted development on any site that has retail, commercial, or parking as a principally permitted activity. There are just bill after bill after bill where the state is handing over the reins to the developers, taking control away from the, the local jurisdictions, and requiring that the only measure of, of review under these review types be objective standards, that there's no subjectivity allowed. And so in part, our response is to ensure that we've developed codes that really provide objective standards that will result in a built environment that feels like Arcata, that looks like Arcata, that, you know, though we accept there's going to be change, that it's the kind of change that we anticipate. And so the reason for recognizing that internally, so we've got some external state pressures, but the reason for recognizing all of this work internally as, as a principally permitted or ministerial pathway for these review projects, is that by doing this work, we are messaging out to the world, this is what we want our community to look like. Once we've done that, if someone comes and provides that to them, then you have to ask, why are we then going through a whole nother subjective level of discretionary review? If they meet those objective standards, if they're going to be able to do it because the state says they can do it anyway, if we've gone through the heavy lifting and done all this work to, to build out our codes, it just makes sense to have those be ministerial reviews. The last piece to that is that, you know, this is kind of, the, the ministerial review and the community benefit is, there, there are two sides of the same coin. With the ministerial review, we don't have the discretionary authorization to request exactions through conditions of approval of these projects. In a typical discretionary review, you go through a process, you evaluate what the, you know, whether the project meets the codes, whether you can make the findings. And then there's typically a round of saying, you know, there's a nexus in proportionality. Planning law and, and case law has said that if you can make a nexus with an off-site improvement, and it's proportional to that development, if it's a small development, it's a small condition of approval. If it's a big development, has a big impact, it's a big condition of approval, that you can exact those from private developments and say, you're going to provide us some off-site improvement. A classic example is our recreation fee for new construction. If you come and you build in the city, we say you're going to give us money for parks because people need parks. When we take the discretionary process away and replace it with a ministerial process for these large-scale projects, we still want to see community benefit come. So the community benefits program is really a replacement for conditions of approval to ensure that we're still seeing the kinds of improvements in the community that, that we value and that we, you know, want to see related to the development of these projects. So.
Thanks for that breakdown. Go ahead, Judith.
Um, yeah, this is maybe something for David or Jen or, or Ben for clarification. Most of what the state seeks to preempt in the Housing Affordability Act and other housing laws relate to affordable housing infill projects. But a lot of what the state is saying indicates that, that ministerial review would also apply to the commercial portions of those projects as well. And so there's nothing about that in anything that we've, we've seen from the city, and in, in many cases, it may actually be the commercial portions of those projects that could be most problematic and that could actually change radically over time from what appeared to be the case when a project was approved to how that project will actually look and operate, you know, five or 10 years in the future. So do, do we have any sense of how that will go? And Ben, is that something that would be in the form-based code that would relate to commercial portions of mixed-use projects?
Yeah, maybe I'll kick it off, and then Ben, you can follow on.
Okay.
The, the form-based code, as it's currently envisioned, will have limitations on certain land use activities that are incompatible with the vision of the gateway area. And so new uses in those commercial spaces could, would, would have to be compatible with those, those uses as well. The, the level, the size, the magnitude, the intensity of those uses are going to change over time. There's no question. And, you know, the, you know, certainly the, the stringent, you know, sort of Euclidean code that we have, you know, currently, you know, would give us something to point to to say, you know, whether or not planned future use or a change in use, you know, needed a new use permit, for example. The current code does not require that in, in its current draft. I guess the, the vision was that the form-based code would include the limitations to prevent, you know, through standards would prevent, would include limitations through these standards that would prevent the kinds of negative impacts that, that might, you know, overwhelm, you know, nearby uses or that, that sort of thing.
And another project that, kind of in the same vein, right, right now, the state's density bonus law, especially for large projects with infill affordable housing, gives up to an 80% density bonus. And presumably, all of these community benefits would, would be some way of trying to convince builders to opt for the form-based code density bonus route rather than what the state is already going to allow and require the city to accept with that 80% density bonus. Did, did, did you propose the waitings of the density bonus, which would also be included in the ministerial approval presumably, or is that separate?
Um, if, if a project come forward with a density bonus proposal, those density bonus projects already by state law have streamlined process. The density bonus projects also can ask for exceptions, and so some of the community benefits that we'd like to seek, you know, if they deem, they have a, a certain number of credits they can use to, you know, eliminate different requirements, and so we may have fewer community benefits on density bonus projects. And, you know, we can't control that, but I, I don't, don't think because we can't control, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't set forth the, the vision for our community. I think we still need to do that, and I think that, you know, projects that, that can, you know, afford to pay for those community benefits will still continue to do so.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I, what I want to ask here is, in, in the proposed waitings for those community benefits that we've seen for the first time today, was there any effort to somehow calibrate those to convince developers to opt for that direction rather than the state-required straight density bonus, which presumably would, would bump those community, community benefits out, but still allow the project to go, to go through with ministerial approval?
I, I see what you're saying, you're asking. Yeah, I think that we do have some items in there that are considered community benefits that would be attractive for projects to claim, even if they're using a density bonus. So density bonus would allow them to go to, you know, higher densities that were, than were allowed by the code. I don't think that anyone who's coming in and looking at, you know, a project benefit overall to their pro forma or to, you know, the type of business that they operate, which is driving them towards density bonus and affordable housing, I don't see them taking a look at this code and saying, oh, well, maybe I won't do density bonus, maybe I'll do their ministerial review instead. What I do think it does is allows folks who are going to do a density bonus to have a real clear understanding of what we would like to see in terms of, you know, what those developments are going to look like. Currently, without objective standards, the project proponent is going to propose whatever they propose, and once they've paid their architects to design something, that's what they're going to build, and we have relatively nothing to say about it. With this code, they'll be able to take a look at it and design based on what, what we're requesting.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that, I'm, you've just confused me even more, and that's why I would like to ask another question. You're saying right now, we don't have objective standards.
Currently, we do not.
But our, our zoning code, our land use code and our design review process does have some objective standards, and that is our default citywide. So I, I'm, I'm not sure how you're saying we don't have objective standards.
Okay, let me, let me clarify. I guess we do absolutely have objective standards, and you'll recall from your recent review of the Westwood Gardens project, that those objective standards can be applied in very broad ways. And so the work that we're trying to do here is to create a vision, a code, and a set of objective standards that will give us a lot more certainty about the types of developments that we'll see. We don't know if they're going to paint it red or brown, and maybe we don't like brown, maybe we like red. We don't have control over that at the end of the day, but we will be able to tell what the, you know, what the massing is going to look like. We will be able to tell where the setbacks are going to be, et cetera. So yes, we have objective standards. The work that we're doing today is to really refine those objective standards, and it's something that we have at least, you know, some sense for what the developments are ultimately going to look like, and that we know they're not going to look, you know, like Motel Six.
Thank you. I, I do want to hear from some other commissioners, but I, I want to make sure we're framing and thinking about this question the right way. Judith brings up some good, good points and concerns about density bonus, and I think as we think through ministerial versus discretionary review, it seems to me that we're, in, in trying to strike this balance and make a decision about how these projects will be moved forward, that if we decide to, in an attempt to retain more control, opt for a discretionary review path, we are more likely, if I'm interpreting this correctly, to end up with projects that end up using the density bonus to get a, to, to sort of get around the community benefits altogether. And it would seem to me that community benefits program is going to have the most impact wrapped in the context of a ministerial review. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, we've, that, that is accurate, and we've also been really focused on density bonus in this conversation thus far, but the other laws that I mentioned, you know, also have means for eliminating our discretionary review. And, you know, so I think, you know, what we're attempting to do here is to show through our code that we've embraced the direction the state is going, we've given developers a pathway, and they're going to use our process more likely than not than they're going to use our process more likely than not than trying to come in and supersede us using the state's process. Um, the, the state has not done, I will tell you that as well. The state has not done with, um, you know, adopting new laws that, you know, further erode our ability to have discretionary review. And so I think it's really important for us to, you know, to take this on as, as a community and, um, you know, and put forward what we'd like to see. Uh, put forward a pathway, uh, that, you know, gives us a reasonable sense for what we're going to see developed and, and allow that to happen then.
Like to hear other commissioners' thoughts on the, uh, sort of different tiers in the, the ministerial review process. Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, uh, question on clarity. I, um, if we set up objective standards that an applicant can clearly identify and, uh, create a project application based on those objective standards, if, if we do decide that they should come before the commission and it almost feels like, um, I, I don't know, the legal term pro forma or something, that they're just coming here to explain that, or show the public, the public can sit through the meeting, that can be zoomed in or whatever, so that, um, it's more open to, uh, at least being educated about how they met all of those objective standards rather than it just happening in the back offices of this building outside of public view. So I'm just wondering, uh, if we might want to be part of that process just so that we can, with the public, see how those objective standards are met. And if they are, we have no choice but to approve the project. I don't know that we would even, even be voting on it, but we would at least have a, um, opportunity to, to see it in the flesh. I mean, it does feel a little bit weird for large projects to just get approved behind closed doors. So I, I'm just wondering how the commission feels about that scenario.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, Peter, go ahead.
Dan, are you thinking that that would be every project regardless of size?
No. And I, I, I really don't have clarity on that at all because no, uh, for sure. In fact, already there's a lot of projects that used to come through us that don't, and it feels good. Um, you know, we used to talk about, I don't know, how they're going to trim out a door or something, some, you know, things 10 years ago that we don't talk about anymore at all. And I'm really glad we don't because it just seemed like it was so subjective when we sit up here. And fortunately, we had John Barstow and he was really good at identifying some of those characteristics and handling that part of the challenge. But, um, no, I, so on size, I, I'm waiting to hear from us and flesh that one out. I have no idea.
Matt?
So I think we had three questions that Ben presented and I, it sounds like we're ready to make a motion on the first one. But I, I guess I want to check to see if anyone has anything else to say about the first question. But that was sort of where I thought the conversation was going.
Dylan, can you pop the, um, questions back on the screen? Thank you.
So I guess, do we want ministerial review? That was sort of what I thought the, this first part of this conversation was about.
Right. I think sort of clarifying to make sure we're all understanding the, the nuances of the question before us, that some of the potential implications with density bonus, et cetera. And then, uh, moving forward, Christian, do you want to weigh in before we, uh, maybe shake a show of hands or a negative vote on this issue?
Sure. Yeah. Um, I think, um, at this point, it's, you know, just from the, what the other commissioners express and what the community has expressed, that, um, ministerial review is prudent and, you know, in some fashion or another. Um, obviously, we're not looking at, you know, trims of doors or anything like that, but for any opportunity where in which, um, we can have some sort of level of transparency between developers and the community members to just be able to see what it looks like in the flesh versus seeing it developed. And then, you know, the, the aftermath is going to be beneficial for our community. So I feel to a certain extent, I feel to an extent that yes, ministerial review is critical.
Okay. Um, yeah. I mean, uh, having heard from, from the, the group, I, I feel like this tiered approach makes sense. I think to Dan's point, we don't need to weigh in on the smaller projects that have a lower impact, but this, this tiered approach is going to give us a chance to weigh in, uh, and look at these projects that are, that are, uh, bigger in size, but also community impact. And I think it's clear that, um, ministerial review is going to give us the most impact with our community benefits program. So I think with that, does, does anyone have an objection to the ministerial review process as proposed by Ben?
Can, can I weigh in on that?
Sure. Please.
Yeah. The, the ministerial review process, as we've seen it so far, um, would have three tiers, but I, if, if we were to do that, I would probably ratchet down the size that would trigger those higher tiers. Um, and also because it's linked to presumed conformance with objective standards in a form-based code, if, if we were to take a straw poll today, um, I would ask that we take another straw poll after we have a draft form-based code because we, we can't presume, presume that the, um, blank check that we would be writing with this straw vote, um, would be exactly what we had envisioned with the form-based code. So I do not want this to be considered a binding vote in any way, shape or form until we have actually seen, um, the draft form-based code that this would apply to. Um, and, and until we have agreed that that's what this ministerial review would be linked to.
David, can you speak to how that process would work since we do, uh, we are short of actually seeing some of the details with the form-based code?
Yeah, absolutely. No, your commissioner mayor is spot on. The, um, the idea behind all of the work that we're doing here, uh, with the straw polling is that we're making small decisions on, you know, specific items leading up to a comprehensive document that we'll then review and take action on. You'll come back sometime, you know, later this year, uh, look at everything in its revised form, uh, make any final tweaks and then say, this is going to be our recommendation to the city council. So absolutely, you will see this again. Um, the, you know, there's still this, this proposal of, you know, properties under 10,000, building height under 40, et cetera, that can be flexed. You know, we'll have to take a look at how this would actually apply in practice, you know, and, you know, basically what that looks like. Essentially, the reason why we did this is because this is like, three-story buildings would be, uh, approved, uh, by a zoning certificate, four-story buildings and on, you know, slightly larger, but you know, the under 10,000 is basically like a, you know, single-family lot to slightly bigger than. So, uh, four-story building for zoning administrator. And then anything over four stories basically comes to planning commission hearing is essentially what it boils down to.
Go ahead, Christian.
Uh, can I just get some clarity and, um, uh, I guess language change in regards of when we describe when required for properties? It should, it should be, uh, parcel size rather than, because it's kind of confusing. It's, you know, it can, properties is house or, or whatever. You know what I mean? I imagine that's what we meant as parcel size, correct?
Um, yes, par- parcel size. This is, um,
Yeah.
vernacular just to make it simple.
Yeah, parcel size would be helpful.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I think Jane mentioned that in her comments as well, so.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah. David, then when you say it would come before the planning commission, um, that's just to clarify whether or not they've met the objective standards. I mean, what we're really heading towards is not having discretionary review, right?
Yeah, exactly. I think, you know, the, you know, this sort of makes intuitive sense. I think it's what you've said. It's what we've heard many public members say. You know, it's different if they're putting up a two or three-story building, you know, on the vacant lot down the street than if, you know, the AmeriGas parcel is having a five-story building built on it. You know, th- those are really dramatically different kinds of, of projects, you know? And even though the ministerial process doesn't afford the, you know, the public and the commission an opportunity to, you know, reshape and mold and say, reduce this, that or the other, because we've already got the objective standards. Um, I think it puts everyone on notice. It allows everyone to see what's going on. Um, to one, you know, uh, you know, commenter, uh, their, their point, you know, that, um, it provides more eyes on a particular decision, uh, and these larger impact decisions will have more eyes on them. It'll have, you know, the opportunity for the public to say, hey, your, your objective standard is, you know, 20 feet and this one looks like it's 21. How can you say that that meets it? Those kinds of things. So those bigger projects, those, those larger impact projects, um, you know, would come and, and would have a multiple, uh, person decision-making process instead of one. The one in between, the zoning administrator hearing, I want to really be clear on that. That is a formal public hearing. It's noticed, uh, neighbors within, uh, or property owners within 500 feet, uh, occupants within 100 feet of that project site would receive a piece of mail notice. Uh, it'd be published in the paper. The date would be, uh, held. Um, we'll probably still be doing, you know, hybrid meetings. People would be able to come and watch that decision being made at the time it's being made, be able to comment on the decision that's being made if they felt like there was something inappropriate. Um, and so, so I think that, you know, it, the, the zoning certificate process is an over the counter. It's something that, you know, is smaller projects that, you know, don't rise to that threshold. We're looking for you all to decide what is that threshold. Is three stories too big? Should it be two stories? Where do you want to, you know, draw that line? And then the zoning administrator. So all of this is flexible in terms of, you know, the parcel size and/or the building height. Or, or, you know, adding other thresholds in there.
Just to follow up on that, I would like to think that an applicant, if they read the materials provided to them about these objective standards and did their homework properly when they came before us, they would know it's a slam dunk. Like this is just a, um, public airing of exactly what, you know, they have already figured out. That we're not going to vote them down. We can't if they've met all those standards.
Yeah, I think that's right. So given the fact that we're clearly going to see this again, that we haven't, uh, as Judith points out, seen the form-based codes. So there's, there's still a lot of questions and details that we need to plug in before we can make a final recommendation. Given the fact that this is an interim review of this, is there anyone that's not comfortable with the proposed ministerial thresholds, um, understanding that we're going to see this again?
I'm not comfortable with them. Um, I, I would be more comfortable if we, um, ratcheted the numbers down so that a zoning administrator hearing, um, would kick in at 10,000 feet, square feet. Um, and that zoning administrator hearing, which would presumably allow the public access to, um, the hearing process as well, um, would kick in at 40 feet instead of 50 feet. And that's considering what our current, um, building and zoning rules are. Ba- basically, it would provide us with, um, some opportunity for the public to at least review the proposal, um, if it's something that basically wouldn't get by under our, our, um, current land use code.
Thank you, Judith. Does anyone else share Judith's concerns about the tier levels?
Well, the sorrel property is 40 feet, right?
The sorrel project, I believe, is 46. Um, 40 feet would allow for, uh, basically a three-story building, 50 feet, a four-story building, and then greater than 50 would be larger than four.
Okay. And we should, we should remember that that doesn't include possible solar arrays and other roof furniture, um, that could easily add another 10 feet to the visible height and bulk of the structure.
It does say building height. I, I would think that solar arrays wouldn't be part of building height.
Right. That's why we need to put it lower.
Well, I'm not seeing any other, um, concerns. So as far as a straw poll goes, it looks like we're five to one in favor of the current.
I can reflect on what Judith is saying. I,
Okay.
I mean, I feel like if all they're doing is coming to present something that they know they can get through, uh, some of these would be pretty large projects potentially. You know, 40 feet is a big project.
So, so you would like to see the threshold standards reduced?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Matt, go ahead.
I, I just want to get some clarification on, let's say a future planning commission is presented with a project, uh, that objectively meets the standards, but subjectively, the planning commission doesn't like it. There's no real, there's nothing you could do, right? And so we, you talked about the pro forma meeting. It's not just that it would be pro forma. It would, that it'd be sort of uncomfortable, right? Uh, and so I'm, I'm just, I'm making sure we're all happy with us having those meetings in the future.
Which is to say, meetings in which we're reviewing a project that we don't have an opportunity to deny based on subjective standards. Go ahead, Judith.
Yeah. One of the things that we would have an opportunity to do, even if we couldn't deny that particular project, is it would provide us with an opportunity to review the form-based code and the standards that we have adopted and change them so that future projects that, um, to use your words, would make us uncomfortable, um, would not meet those objective standards as amended. Um, without that, we would have no way of knowing until the buildings are built and they're atrocious. Um, and we would then say, well, I guess they met the standards, but we wouldn't know how they got through. So I think that having those hearings, especially in the first few years of the operation of the form-based code in the gateway, will be really important for us to monitor how those standards are actually working and how they're operating. If it turns out we've adopted standards that are just way too strict and nothing is getting through and no builders are coming forward to build housing, we'll know that too. But unless it comes before us, we won't have a clue except in the occasional staff report.
I think, I think another added benefit to, um, you know, the public hearing process with the planning commission is that, um, oftentimes, you know, there are project elements that developers would be happy to change. And so if they came before you and, you know, they met the objective standards and you felt like, you know, they painted it brown, you wanted to paint it red, or whatever the case that made you uncomfortable, um, you know, oftentimes you can suggest that and the developers are, are happy to comply.
Hey, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sensing broad agreement on the planning commission that we do want to see some of these projects. I think, if I'm understanding everyone, it's just a question of at what point do we trigger projects that need to come before the planning commission? But I think we all agree on the, on the principles, the importance. I think it's a matter of, um, what, what, uh, what tiers require which responses. Dan?
Basically, it's three stories versus four stories. Is that correct?
Yeah. With, uh, 40 feet is the limit, which is what I heard the proposal would be. So zoning administrator hearing to 10,000, uh, square feet parcel size and 40 feet building height. Um, that would allow for a three-story building. Excuse me. Um, and, uh, then the planning commission would be reviewing four stories and above.
Okay. So again, giving further discussion, I know Judith would like to see the tiers changed. Is there anyone else that would like to advocate for changing the thresholds for ministerial review? Dan?
No. Well, if we're doing a straw poll, I'll, I'll side with Judith on that.
Okay. So then we have two for changing the thresholds and four against on a straw poll for changing the ministerial thresholds.
Wait, this is all just ministerial?
Every, yeah, everything's ministerial.
Correct. Correct.
Right. So it's not a threshold for ministerial?
Well, I'm just looking at the ministerial thresholds. So I think what we're discussing is what are the thresholds for the different tiered approaches? And I think the question is, I'm hearing that you and Dan Booth would like to adjust those thresholds. And the question is, does anyone else also want to change those thresholds?
I just want to go back to Matt's suggestion. I think we need to, we need to come around on suggestion number one first, which is, do we approve of ministerial review?
It's conditional on the thresholds.
So Judith, you're concerned regarding properties. So we're looking at reducing the zoning administrators hearing down to 10,000 square feet. Is that what you're looking at? And also building height?
Yes.
Okay. So we know, do we know that most of the parcels that are smaller are less than 10,000 square feet? I think a majority of the, you know, that's at 0.22 acres. A majority of the parcels that are small parcels within the, you know, within the gateway area are less than that. You know, we only have a couple of parts and everything else beyond. And everything else beyond that is greater than that, 20,000 square feet. So we're looking at, pretty much looking at every single project or every, every project that's going on in the gateway area plan is going to be going to the zoning administrator. So that's, you know, in regards of what we're looking at. And that's, if that's what we're willing to accept, that's what we're willing to accept. It's just, you know, in regards of sizing of the parcels that are out there existing and looking at maps, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work left.
I, I would just, I would put an addition onto that, which is that's what we're willing to accept right now, given that we don't have all the rest of the information and we're going to have a chance to revisit.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So, did you want to weigh in, David?
I, just two quick things. Number one, if, you know, if it makes, you know, commissioners comfortable to go back and address the first question, I think the conversation that I'm hearing, it's going to overwhelmingly be, yes, we're comfortable with ministerial approval. But if you want to go through that process, I would suggest you back up to question number one. And then in terms of the, the size, I mean, it, it really, it's no, it's neither here nor there. We, we made this recommendation not based on, you know, a, this is not a strong recommendation. This is just a framework. Do you like this framework? Should we vet it out more? So I guess what I would suggest is that, I apologize, I've got frog in my throat. What I'd suggest is maybe instead of getting too into the details on what the specific thresholds would be, if you like this approach, tell us, yes, come back with something though that has a little bit more meat on the bones and we'll come back and share with you what types of projects would look like. At 10,000 square feet, you're basically saying, you know, anything that's about the size of a single-family residential zone parcel would be a zoning administrator hearing. I think that those sized projects should probably be over the counter. To Commissioner Figaro's point, there aren't many parcels in that mid-range. And you're, you know, not going to have, parcels in that mid-range, you're not going to have large projects on them anyway. And there may be some other factors that we need to look at. You know, what if you have a, you know, one acre parcel, but the, but the project is really just a one, two-story building? You know, does the commission really want to look at that? So I guess what I'm looking for here is, are we on the right track? Do we want a ministerial approval? Do you want to have tiered approach? If so, we'll come back with a recommendation in the, the form-based code that vets out a little, some of these issues in a little bit more detail.
Okay. That's a good, let's, let's, let's take a vote. Are we in favor of ministerial review for these projects, stripping our, our deliberation down to question one, knowing that we can mess with, request, alter what the levels of the tiered approach are? Is everyone in favor of question one specifically?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. Wonderful. Progress. So, moving on to question two, confirm the tiered approach. I think we can also say, yes, we're interested in, I don't want to presume, but it sounds like we're, as part of that, also confirming the tiered approach to ministerial review. Does everyone also agree with that? Without committing to a specific threshold, does everyone agree with the idea conceptually of a tiered approach?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Judith?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Is, is that an abstain or how do we?
I, I'm saying this is a, a process where a dissenting voice wouldn't matter anyways. So I won't even bother to dissent.
Okay. So we're in, that's a yes to one and two. And so where we can really sort of gain some traction here, it looks like in question three regarding providing feedback on those thresholds. And I can see you've got something to add here, David, so why don't you jump in?
Yeah, I feel like I've got the feedback. If you feel comfortable with us coming back with something that's a little more well-vetted, what I'll attempt to do is to do that before you see the form-based code in June so that you can take another look at it. We can have a broader conversation about it. I'll present something on it. I didn't want to spend a lot of effort in developing a system if you all were like, no, we don't want that at all.
Okay. Is everyone, Peter, go ahead.
David, it would be very helpful to know how many lots in the gateway area are, fall into these different categories.
I think that's kind of.
That'll absolutely be part of the analysis.
That's kind of the level of detail that we would be looking for.
I'm, I'm wondering if you could actually present that in map form, some kind of, you know, color-coded map so that we have, have an idea what the thresholds are.
May I ask a very brief question?
Go ahead, Dan.
Just for clarity, what is a zoning certificate?
A zoning certificate or a zoning clearance is a, an administrative review to verify whether or not your parcel or your project or proposal meets our code. And so if you came in for a building permit and no other planning review was triggered, we have a planning review of that building permit. And we're going through and making sure that you, you know, meet the setbacks, you meet the height limits, you don't have, you know, equipment in the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, that you meet our code. Our sign-off on a building permit is effectively a zoning clearance or a zoning certificate. So that's what that process looks like. Someone would come in with a build, a set of building plans. Staff would go through it and verify that it meets the form-based code objective standards. They would look at the community benefits the project is proposing, verify that they, you know, satisfy whatever that, that structure is, that they've given us those community benefits, and verify that they have a housing component to this. And then we would approve it over the counter.
Great. I would like to hit the pause button for a five-minute bio break right now. And then we can hand it back over to Ben for discussion on community benefits. We will be back here at 10:12. All right, we are back. Moving on to the next portion of this discussion, I'd like to turn it back over to Ben for a presentation on our community benefits program.
All right, thank you. So again, a brief presentation to review the packet materials before planning commission discussion and feedback. So we're talking about the community benefits program, which is something that the planning commission has been discussing for some time related to the gateway code. Just as a reminder, a community benefits program is a system where an applicant receives something of, of value, incentives in exchange for project features and amenities that benefit the general public. So this is a system that many communities use. Sometimes it's referred to as incentive zoning or value capture. And typical incentives are increased intensity or height and/or a streamlined approval process. And benefits are tailored to the individual goals and priorities of individual communities, but often address issues such as housing production, affordable housing, open space, transportation improvements, and infrastructure improvements. And so the policy foundation for the gateway code community benefits program is contained in the gateway plan. And the concept is that by right or ministerial approvals and additional height is allowed for projects that provide community benefits. And the plan also says that applicants will be permitted to select benefits from a menu of options and that the system will consider the increased development potential and the value of the benefit when deciding how the details work. And so the planning commission, I understand, has been talking about maximum height in the, in the plan area relative to the community benefit system. And the current recommendation is to cap maximum height at seven stories for tier four projects that would be permitted only within the barrel district. Tier three projects would allow up to six stories in both the barrel and the hub district, up to five stories for tier two projects in the barrel, hub, and corridor. And then in all areas, including the gateway neighborhood sub-areas, a maximum of four stories for tier one projects. And so we're now at the point where we're starting to add a little meat to the bones of how the community benefit program will work. And what we are recommending is that some of the details live in the gateway code and some of the details live outside of the municipal code within a city council resolution. So the sort of content that would be in the gateway code would be the basic requirements for the community benefit program, including which projects are eligible, the tiers and within which sub-areas the tiers are available. And then what the incentives include, which is the increased allowed height as well as the ministerial by right process. So that's would be sort of the basic requirements and mechanics of how the community benefit program would work and that would live in the gateway code. And what we're recommending is that the details related to the available benefits, the points required to be eligible for different tiers, as well as the point values themselves for the individual benefits, that that would be adopted by the city council in a resolution. And this is something that a, a number of cities who have community benefit programs do have these details within a city council resolution, which makes it a, a little bit more of a nimble, flexible system. And when adjustments are needed, it's something that can occur a little bit, a little more easily. So as you may recall, you've been discussing different community benefit categories that are shown up on the screen. And you've been talking about individual benefits within these categories and discussing their relative value to the community. And so what we've done is we've added more detail and more specificity to those individual benefits. And we've also proposed the start of a point system where for different tiers, a different number of points are required. And, you know, different cities approach this in different ways. Some cities use a point system similar to what we have put together and what we're recommending. There are, there are alternative approaches where it's simply more of a number of benefits that are required rather than points or variable points assigned to different benefits. So there are different ways to do that, to do this. And this is what we're, we put together and what we're recommending. So for different tiers, there would be a different point requirement. So the highest tier, obviously you would need the most points. And for the lowest tier, you would need the least number of points. Another thing that we've done is we, we've required points from different categories, from different tiers. So for example, if a project is participating in a tier four community benefit program, that they would need to provide benefits from four different categories rather than just from one category. And part of the idea behind this is that we want to encourage projects to provide a range of different benefits, both within an individual project and for, across different projects. And this is one of the ways that we can do that. So this is sort of the framework for how the point system would work.
Hey Ben, sorry to interrupt. Commissioner Lehman has a question for you.
Okay.
Hi, Ben. Where did this table come from? Did, did you make it up? Is it based on what other cities do?
It, it reflects other approaches that cities have taken. I would say the specifics of the numbers is not something that's based on another city. It's more of a review of what we think would work or headed in the direction of what we would work as we continue to sort of refine it over time. The sort of the basic, the basic architecture is something that other cities have done. The sort of the basic, the basic architecture is something that other cities have done. Thank you. All right. So with a system that assigns points to individual benefits, we have some kind of guiding principles that we've used when thinking about how to approach this. First, we really want there to be a realistic pathway on every project for a project to achieve the highest tier available and considering both financial and physical feasibility. So for example, if there's a project in the hub where up to six stories with tier three is permitted, we really want to make sure that there is a pathway for every project that might want to on every parcel to achieve that. And so if the benefits and the point values are established in a way that just does not make that possible for financial or physical feasibility reasons, we would see that as being a problem. So we've been trying to avoid that so far in what we've been doing. Another principle is that we want to promote a variety of benefits provided by different projects. And so our point values will reflect that goal. We also want to obtain the benefits most highly valued by the community. And in some cases, those highly valued benefits are not the most expensive to a developer. And that's okay to assign those those points a relatively high number, right, to to assign those benefits a relatively high number of points. There are some communities when putting together a community benefits program where they aim to maximize the financial value of the benefit provided. So they'll look very closely at, you know, what is a particular benefit? What would that cost to a developer? And set the system up in a way to maximize the total financial value of the benefits provided. I think Arcata, we're looking to to sort of find a balance of costs to the developer and value to the community and to think of both of those things when assigning point values and thinking about exactly what is required in order to be eligible for the increased height and streamlined approval. So in your packet is a series of tables for each of the categories that identifies the benefit, a description of the benefit, and then the point values. And so I'm going to zoom in to one just to kind of illustrate it a little bit more. This just happens to be the first benefit in the first category. And this is additional onsite affordable units. So if an applicant agrees to provide affordable units in excess of the gateway area plan, inclusionary housing requirement by a certain percentage, we have 10% in here for now, but we may adjust that. They would be eligible for three points. And so this is a great example of how some further sort of analysis and tinkering might be needed. So providing additional onsite affordable units, that's an expensive proposition. And if this is something that is highly valued by the community, we might want to adjust through the point value a little bit to make it more attractive to an applicant. Here's another example. Public art. And here's an example of a type of benefit that's tied to the total project construction cost. So to receive the points, they would need to provide public art equal to 1.5% of total project construction costs. This 1.5% is a project is a is a construction cost that you see in a number of different community benefit programs, including ones that I've worked on in the past. That may not be the right number for Arcata. We may adjust that potentially down to look at, to make sure that that's sort of exactly what we want to be. And then you can also see in the points that there's different points depending on the nature of the public art that's provided. So one last sort of more detailed example. Energy efficient buildings. So assigning points for projects that exceed exceed minimum building energy efficiency required by the California Energy Code and then different point values depending on the extent to which the project exceeds those minimum requirements. And then with sort of specificity in the in in the system for exactly how that is calculated and how that is determined. And so I wanted to walk through kind of a hypothetical project to make this a little bit more tangible and less abstract. So if a project came in requesting participation in the community benefit program, one of the first things that the city would do would to be to determine whether or not the project is eligible. And eligibility requirements include that the project needs to include housing. And if it's a mixed use project, a certain percentage of the floor area, the project needs to consist of housing. It needs to meet minimum density requirements. It must meet the gateway code standards, the objective standards. And if and when the city adopts an inclusionary housing requirement for the gateway area, we need to comply with that requirement and to be eligible. So let's say, for example, the proposed project similar to something that that's shown in this rendering comes in for a property in the gateway hub subarea. And that would be eligible for a tier three community benefits, which would allow for up to six stories. And the way the system and points are set up right now, we're saying that a tier three project would require up to 20 points with the requirement that the project would need to receive points from three different categories. And so what the project would be able to do is to select different benefits from the menu in order to comply with this requirement. So just sort of hypothetically, you know, a project could decide under category one. If it's if if it is, application is submitted within two years of plan adoption, that project would receive six points. And then so the project could also choose to, under category three, pay an additional park fee and get three points. Under category five, provide free bus passes for a certain period of time for three points to provide rooftop open space under category six to receive two points. And then under category seven for building amenities for residents could provide an exercise room and receive two points for residents and then include a ground floor neighborhood serving commercial use as part of a mixed use development and receive four points. And and to to get at the 20-point minimum requirement from at least three different categories. And so this is just hypothetical. And in a, an actual project would choose which benefits to provide and from which categories. But this is just kind of trying to illustrate a little bit more specifically or what how this would work. So as I mentioned before, we've been putting more meat to the bones based on what we've been hearing from the planning commission and the public. There is more work that we need to do. In particular, there are a number of benefits where we do need to add more specificity. So it's sufficiently objective and it's very clear what's required both for an applicant and from the city's perspective. And we do expect that we're going to enjoy adjust point values based on input from an economist and relative developer costs. But just like with the permit approach, we're at a point where we want to make sure that we're generally headed on the right track as we continue to develop and refine this to include in the draft gateway code that will go before the planning commission in June. So we're asking you this morning to provide feedback is on whether the program is generally on the right track. And then when you're looking at the point values, if there's anything that just seems really clearly off base to you sort of relatively speaking, I don't think we want to get into a detailed discussion of whether a particular benefit should be three versus four points. But if there's just something that's clearly looking off to you, we would appreciate hearing that this morning. And then in the list of benefits, if there are specific benefits that you see that are missing that should be added, we definitely want to hear that. Or if you believe that there are benefits included that just should not be part of the system at all, that would be something that would be good for us to hear as well. So that concludes my part of the presentation.
Thanks, Ben. David, do you have anything to add before planning commission deliberation?
I don't. The only thing I wanted to say was I will, if you get to bullet number two, and you have comments that you want to make, I'll pull up the community benefits attachment that we had to the to the planning commission staff report and we'll take notes on on your comments.
Great, that's useful. Go ahead, Dan. I'll take you first and then come to you, Judith.
I definitely think we're on the right track. I do have some comments on specifics. I'd like to start off with category two, public art. Feels like a benefit that could be very subjective. For example, if a developer had to put in a wall and then said, how about if I do mosaic on the wall or, you know, something, somebody behind the scenes or in a public hearing has to decide if that is truly a three-point public benefit. You know, maybe it was a $50,000 wall and and he's now counting that whole 50,000 as an art piece when, you know, just adding the mosaic is, you know, just a fraction of the cost of the art, you know, so I mean of the wall. Anyway, moving on. There's everything in category seven. I am surprised is on this list because they are inside the building. They feel like issues that are between the developer and the tenants of the building. I look at this whole program as us not caring about what happens inside of the buildings as much as how it benefits the community that interacts with the building, walks by it, experiences the building architecturally and, you know, the trees, those sidewalks, things like that. What goes on inside the building, whether or not they have an exercise room or free wifi, I don't care about. And I'd like to hear what the commission thinks about that. And the last thing is the very last benefit on the whole list, category eight is prevailing wage. Eight points. I think a lot of these projects potentially will be built by out of town developers. And they might bring their own crew, like a lot of Hsu projects do. What the wages of that crew are, I don't think benefits this community very much. You know, they're sending their check home to pay their mortgages or whatever, wherever they came from. I don't see how that gains eight points on our list. And I'd like to hear commission or Ben or somebody respond to that.
Thanks, Dan. Judith, do you want to share some comments?
Yeah, I I I could make comments on on a bit by bit, the way Dan did, but I think maybe we'll do that later. Mine is a question for Ben. I'm wondering if when this comes back to us, we would be able to see some kind of comparison between these point values and the tiers and the advantages that a developer would use by using the state density bonus instead. Even if that bumps it out of this ministerial approval process because presumably the whole community benefits rationale is to bring developers into our system rather than them choosing to use the statewide density bonus system. So would these point values provide the the clout that we want relative to our livable city? And would they provide the leverage that we would seek for developers to use our system rather than just go with what they're familiar with, which would be the statewide density bonus opportunities?
Thanks, Judith.
So I would say that that's certainly something that could be done. I would pass it to the community development director to comment on whether whether that is something that he would like us to to work on.
I'm sorry, did you want to go through commissioner comments first and then address the?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments or questions about these different community program, benefit program? Go ahead, Matt.
Are we doing just sort of a general question or are we doing sort of what Dan did and going to specific?
I think sort of I, I don't know how you take it, I suppose. I think commissioners may have different takes, high level or more specific. So I'll take it either way.
Okay, I'll, I just, I took a couple notes. The parcel frontage dedication benefit has a community benefit for off-street parking, which we know I don't like. Bus passes could be not just for residents of buildings, but also employees of that building. We are about, hopefully, Arcata is going to adopt a local reach code and the benefit for being above the state standard should also be for being above Arcata's standard. And one other thing I wanted to look at was we talked about unbending parking from rent. And I I'm unclear if that's going to be just a general part of the plan or a community benefit.
Thanks, Matt. Christian, anything you want to add at this point? Or you're good. Peter?
I generally support this format and idea. I think it would, it would provide the kind of building that we're hoping for in the gateway area. So I I can say that this is the first time I've seen these categories and these point assignments. And I have not yet had enough time to think about them to make good decisions.
Yeah, I mean, just to remind us all that we're we're, and if if we could put back up the three questions that Ben had so that we can, thank you, use those to guide our our deliberations. We're regarding, same thing in this section of our discussion, we're going to have a chance to come back to this. We're going to see more details emerge as we work through this material. So this is not our our final take on this. So let's just all keep that in mind. I think we can probably get through the first question, I hope. Does you know, how does the commission feel generally speaking, is this, is this program generally on the right track? Yea or nay? Christian?
Yep.
Judith?
Yep.
We're all, we're all in alignment that generally this program is on the right track. Next question to consider is are there any point values that seem clearly off base? Example, higher or lower, given importance to the community. I think Dan brought up a couple examples of that. This is a place where we could maybe talk about any categories that seem sort of not like they need small tweaks, but that are, if I'm understanding correctly, sort of more widely off base. Does anyone have any input? Matt and then Judith?
Yeah, so to Dan's point about sort of inside of the building, something I've heard from the community is a concern about, you know, the livability of these buildings, right? And so I do think to some extent, it is a like a like issue of the public, how livable the buildings are inside. But then, that being said, I don't know that like free wifi is what people have in mind when they're talking about that sort of livability. And so I like the concept, but I don't know if all the specific things listed there are what we want to keep.
Got it.
If I, if I could just jump in on that too. We brought these forward based on the work that you did with Heather Equinos and Jen and Dilo. I think it was in November of last year when the commission ranked and prioritized different categories. And I believe some of the content that is in this table came from that, but some of we've we've also added. So again, recognizing this is the first time you've seen it and also recognizing it would take us a long time to go, you know, through each and every one of these categories. I think that if if there's something that really stands out for you, if you want to strike wifi, you know, that would be a good, good, you know, like direction for us, strike wifi. The category seven was something that ranked higher in that exercise. And then also you'll see the point to point values for these are relatively low with the exception of, you know, street facing. of, you know, street-facing commercial. And so, you know, we're kind of incentivizing, you know, mixed-use buildings, we're incentivizing, you know, having that exterior to the community, and that sort of thing. So that's, that's why this one is in here, but certainly, if you're like, look, just strike category seven altogether, that would be good feedback, or if there's something that you want us to strike, we can.
Judith? Thanks David.
Yeah, a couple of things. First off, I tend to agree with Dan, if the point of the form-based code is the public-facing aspects of these things, all of these other features for building amenities for residents could, could actually be marketing things that would profit the landlord, or the developer, more than the public. So, even though they're very low points, I think that also means that unless, you know, we require a bunch of them, they, they don't function. These are also things that we could require as part of our basic code for buildings of a certain size, citywide. And, that brings me to a second point, which is, there are a number of these features which provide with percentages or ratios above state standards. And I think that, in many of those categories, the city of Arcata should and probably will adopt standards higher than the state standards. And so, if there's going to be any benefit, it needs to be beyond citywide standards. And there are a number of these features, which I believe that we should adopt citywide, rather than just in this location, or at the very least, for all of the opportunity zones that were identified in the land use plan. And so, I think that, you know, it's difficult to know point values until we've seen the details, but anything that simply exceeds state standards doesn't necessarily speak to the standards that Arcata has and ought to adopt, citywide to begin with.
Thanks Judith. Peter?
I disagree that interior building amenities should not be part of this. I think they should be. And I think that having wifi throughout a building is a community benefit, because lots of less affluent people can't afford it. And, and their kids are a lot better off having free wifi than if not. So, I think that's a benefit. Anyway, I, I would be in favor of leaving that category.
Peter, thanks Peter. Christian, do you have anything to add before part of this discussion?
Not particularly anything that's serving just yet, so I don't have anything to say just a moment.
Perfect. I will say, I agree with Judith and Dan, that the interior amenities of the building, it's harder for me to construe those as a community benefit, in the same way that some of these other categories clearly are. If there was a category that I thought should have more weight than others, for me, it would be transportation and mobility. I would like to see more emphasis put on that, that specific category. Electric car share I see has five points, but some of these other benefits in that portion are very low, especially given the overall effort to reduce vehicle miles traveled. My vote would be for increased point values for the category five, transportation and mobility.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, so if, could you put our, our three questions back up, to reframe our discussion, as we've all weighed in a little bit, on question two, or bullet point two, which is, are there any point values that seem clearly off-base? You heard a variety of feedback from the Planning Commission, is that sufficient to instruct the form-based code effort, sort of giving us a little more detail. I think there was, there was a variety of feedback on a variety of different points. Does that, does that give staff sufficient direction to rework this?
I think so. Let me just ask, let me, let me just run through these, and if we could do straw poll real quick on each one of them, because some, you know, were mentioned, and then they weren't brought back up again. Okay, so, and I may have misinterpreted this, Dan, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard was, get rid of the art?
No, I just think it's a slippery one. I totally support the idea of public art. Maybe it needs to be off-site public art, I don't know. If it is just part of their own parking area, or something like that, is that truly a public benefit, or is it, you know, and who's going to decide? You know, if he says, what if I use these fancy paint colors, can I count that? Do you decide that back behind the, you know, closed doors?
It would be whoever the review authority is, and so if it comes to the Planning Commission, it would be the Planning Commission. I do think that you're right, art is a very slippery, slippery slope. Who, you know, you know, is that art? Is the wall that it's sitting on art, you know? I, so I think that, you know, if someone came forward and said, this is art, we would have to accept that that's art. So, if that's something that the commission wants to remove, recognizing it's slippery, or if you want to keep, recognizing it doesn't have very many points associated with it, that'd be a good straw poll real quick.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the problem with art is that it is by nature subjective, and we're trying to build what are clearly objective standards. I agree with Dan, that there is potential in this area for, it seems most, most rife with potential for abuse. Someone puts one tile up, or a black square à la Rothko, and calls it art, and then, you know, looks for credits. I think perhaps either doing our best to more clearly define what are the, what do we mean when we say public art, that might be useful, might help kind of shed some light on some of the proposed examples that Dan brought up. Otherwise, I think, you know, that's a difficult one. Go ahead Matt. Peter?
I will quickly say, there's another one that's just put in money into the community art trust, and so maybe that's like a better way to capture the art interest, instead of it having to be site-specific, and to a specific project, just have it be controlled by the community art trust.
I was going to say, let's make sure the points are small, so that if there is a controversy, it's not a big one.
I'm going to put in one last, you know, pitch for the public art, because if you incentivize it, you'll get it, regardless of whether it's, you know, interpreted by one person, the other person is art. And this is something that came out of the public engagement that we did, as, as a community value. And so I'll just leave you with that, and, and there you have it. If you do put money into the public art fund, we still don't have control over what those things are going to be, and they might still be a white wall with a black tile.
Go ahead Judith.
Yeah, we're talking about points out of line.
I think we're talking specifically about.
Yeah, I want to, I want to get a, resolve this public art, if we want to go on and remove it, and then we can come back and add, add to the list that I have running here.
Okay, I didn't realize we were going to still go on public art. I think, I think the 1% for art program approach in projects is, is very well-established, and we, we do have an arts committee. The thing, the thing that the onsite versus trust fund, or whatever we're going to call it, would do, is that it would get those pieces of art on the site, but publicly accessible and viewable, as opposed to 1% that would go onto public property only. And so, it would, you know, disperse the art regardless of what your taste or political orientation is throughout these buildings. It would allow for, you know, mosaics and murals on the sides of walls, it would, you know, and it, it's a relatively low value. I think it's pretty harmless to keep it in there, even if what we may have as a result are things that we don't personally appreciate. And I, I guess what I had raised my hand for was, was another disproportionate thing that I guess we'll get to later.
Yeah, let's stick with public art for now. Dan, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, I don't want to be part of the public, I mean, the review authority on that one, you know, like.
Okay.
I, I still think there may be potential elements to, you know, there's aesthetic components and aesthetic improvements that we can think about, like for instance, stamping of concrete, or stamping of walls. It's not just murals, it's not just paint on walls, it can be actual architectural, like, aesthetical components to retaining walls, for instance, or sidewalks, like putting fish on sidewalks. Or, you know, there's, if you look at a bunch of the Clean California projects, for instance, there's opportunities wherein which we can incorporate, you know, these architectural, you know, I guess it's more landscape architectural improvements to our projects. So it's, you have to look, look at it through the lens of landscape architecture as well, not just murals and paint on the wall.
So, I'm just reading this. It already says, subject to approval through the public art process. So, is that us as a public art process? Yeah?
No, I'll address that one, because we have a strategic arts plan, which identifies who would be involved in that approval process. And this does support the strategic arts plan, so it's, it's a benefit that would support that plan.
So, so the project would come to us, already having been approved, like the art already having been approved by them, and we could just say, okay, objectively, it has already been approved by them?
Yes, or it may actually get approved after it's developed, once they figure out where they're going to put the art, and what that looks like.
Okay, with that clarification, I think it's fine.
I agree. Good, good point.
Thanks for that Jen. Is everyone comfortable with, with that language, given the discussion? Any objections, I should say? Let's, let's go on to the next item then. David?
So I got, get rid of section seven.
Are we going, are we going in order?
I'm going in the order that I wrote them down, yeah.
Wait, the order that you wrote them down, not the order in the document?
The order that they were raised in our discussion.
The order that you all brought them up, yeah.
Dan was the first commenter.
So, category seven, building amenities for residents.
Should we just take a straw poll quick, because I think some of us have already sort of spoken.
Please.
Yeah. I think, Peter, you were for, Matt, I think you were for, Dan, Judith, and I were all against.
There is one item in there that I feel does provide a very clear community benefit, which is the waste collection and recycling areas. However, I think that should be ramped up citywide for all multi-unit developments, and so I don't know that it should provide extra points here, just because they're doing it in the next couple of years.
Totally agree.
Christian, where do you land on category seven, building amenities for residents?
I think I'm going to side on the, you know, there is, you know, the residents are part of the community, and I feel that some of these benefits that are proposed benefit the residents that are also part of our community. So I feel more in line with Commissioner Simmons and, and company ultimately. So I feel, oh, I feel like we need to keep those.
Okay. We're, we're deadlocked. Maybe this is a good moment for gradients of agreement? Okay, regarding the question of removing or retaining category seven, and can we get the gradients of agreement up, just so that everyone can make sure we're all using the same metric for our fingers?
Does it make sense to go through item by item, because we might have different feelings about different items in there? That could be a very quick process.
I think, I think broadly, the discussion was landing on removing or retaining.
I, I don't have a visual for the gradients of agreement, and I apologize, we were intending to put them up in the room here. The gradients agreement basically boil down to, if you hold up a one, that means you totally agree. If you hold up a five, that means you totally disagree, and that you would block it. Going down from five to four, if you hold up four fingers, that means that you disagree, but you wouldn't block it. You have significant concerns, but you wouldn't block it. Three, you have no real opinion. Two, you would fall in line with approval. And so if you want to do gradients of agreement on whether to get rid of category seven.
Okay, so, let's, let's try our gradients of agreement decision-making tool. As a, as a block, how do we feel about removing category seven as a community benefit?
I, I feel that if we can go through item by item, or talk about the point value, it probably makes a lot more sense than to remove the entire category and get rid of that nuance.
So you could vote five, and that would keep the category, and then you'd have the opportunity at a later date to, to finesse the category.
I doubt that later date is going to come up, as far as I'm concerned. So, I would appreciate being able to get at the individual items.
Well, you can vote or not, I suppose, with the gradients of agreement, but can we just get, again, everyone's gradient of agreement regarding remove? Cannot support this, strong objections, cannot support this, completely agree, I'm neutral, supportive with minor concerns.
Yeah, so it looks like it stays in as a category, and then the question is, do you want to discuss the particulars of the category at this point, or, or move on? We have one commissioner who'd like to discuss the, the category in more detail.
Would the, would the rest of the commission like to pull this section apart, item by item, or, having voted to retain it, move on?
Are we planning to get to the bike rack items this morning?
Well, we're, we're hoping to, I think is.
Because if that's the case, we have to move on.
Well, so that's a vote for moving on. Dan?
Yeah, I'm fine with moving on.
Christian?
I, I feel comfortable with moving on, considering, you know, the category seven component will be, you know, it's, choose one, you know, builders have to choose multiple categories ultimately. Whether or not this is chosen or not, is up to the developer. So, and also, the scoring is low anyway, so it's not going to benefit them drastically anyways.
Okay, so we're, we're moving on. Let's go to the next issue.
Okay, I'm going to try and get through these real quickly. If we could just do the negative polling, there was a pitch to get rid of prevailing wage as a requirement, or as a category?
No, just that single item.
The prevailing, yeah, the prevailing wage item. Remove that from the list.
One thing I'm wondering about, it seems that a number of the state housing laws already have prevailing wage as part of them. And so I think in order to take advantage of some of the other benefits, we would have to require prevailing wage regardless. And it may not be, you know, it, it may be duplicative of state requirements anyway, and so to give it points would not necessarily serve us well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think a lot of the developments that will occur will require prevailing wage, and we shouldn't give points for something that's required.
Can staff weigh in, in, on the accuracy of that? Is that, is that true?
I think many projects that have federal funding, or that use the streamlining laws that are on the books right now, will have prevailing wage requirements in the future. I believe the state is going to change that, recognizing that prevailing wage dramatically increases the cost of projects, and they're not seeing as many projects as they'd like to see. The reason why we added it in here is because we do have a large workforce locally that could benefit from being subs on projects, and if they were paid prevailing wage, that would support our local economy. It can be removed, it can be kept in. If we could just take a quick straw poll, we could, you know, resolve whether to keep it in or take it out.
Okay. The question then, straw poll, should we remove the prevailing wage? Dan is a vote for yes. Christian? Yes, two yes. Judith?
I'm, I'm neutral on this, because I think it's very contextual for the project.
Neutral. Peter? Yes. Matt, yes.
The next item I had on my list was, do point values dissuade density bonus? This was the issue that Commissioner Mayor brought up. I felt like I addressed it before verbally. I did not have an analysis to show you that. I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. If the commission wishes us, as I'm not exactly sure what that would look like. If the commission wishes us as a whole to bring that item back, I will. Otherwise, certainly I'm happy to talk offline about, you know, my, my thoughts on it with any interested commissioner. So do we bring back, do we bring back more analysis on how will this point system and this community benefits program relate to projects for, that, that seek density bonus?
Can, can I just say something about why I mentioned that? The city has engaged the Turner Center to provide analyses similar to that. Six months is free. After that, it's $50,000 for six months. Apparently, we're going to behave for those analyses anyway. I think we should take advantage of that opportunity.
I don't think that's what the Turner Labs dashboard is going to do. I don't think it's going to have that kind of analysis, but, but we could, we could certainly figure out a way to do that analysis for you in some way, shape or form.
So who on, who on the commission is in favor, in addition to Judith, of seeing an analysis that will compare these community points benefit to the density bonus? Do we want to see more about that? No. Christian? You find where, like we are, or want to see further analysis from staff?
I think it's prudent, considering, you know, that's really, you know, that's, there's two ways that we can go with this. Is ultimately, it's, the developer's going to follow our form-based code, or they're going to follow state law, right? So, I think, well, it's a matter of how much it's going to cost and how long it's going to take. You know, that's really, you know, is this really something we're going to see within a reasonable amount of time? Or is it going to be something that is going to be something we talk about? And it doesn't happen within the amount of time that we expect to have something come our way. So, I think, I think, I think I need a little bit more information before I agree to...
It's a maybe, depending on time and resources. Matt?
So, I'm against it, and I'll say why. I think, sort of like what Commissioner Mayor was saying. This is exactly the kind of thing that will, like, see happen in the real world, and then can adapt to based on that, right? And so if all of the projects that get built in the next couple of years are all, you know, state density bonus projects, we know we've set our barrier too high, and we'll go back and look at it. And I think that, like, that real-world information is going to be way more valuable than any sort of forward-looking analysis.
So therefore, you're...
Against bringing back some sort of analysis.
Peter?
I confess the ignorance here. Are you saying that if someone, if a developer uses the density bonus, they don't have to use any of this code?
That's correct.
Well, no, they'll, they'll still have to abide by our form-based code, but they don't have to have anything to do with our community amenities benefits program.
If a developer chooses to use the density bonus to build a building, it gets them around any commitment or obligation to using our community benefits program? So the question...
Let me refine that a little bit. My understanding is that a project that comes forward with density bonus, for example, many of the other laws do this as well, is that the developer is allowed to have certain concessions and incentives that it is basically required to be provided by, by the jurisdiction. And so if the developer can show that their, and it's a really low threshold, the HCD views this as a very low threshold, to show that their project is financially impacted by a community benefit, then they are allowed something like three concessions and two incentives, or something like that. So, a developer might be required to provide five community benefits by our form-based code. And they can say, "These three are too expensive. I want to take those three off." And we'd have to say, "Okay, your, your density bonus, you can take those three off. You're going to give us the other two."
I, I just, in defense of the state law, the other benefit they're providing is a lot of affordable housing, right? And so, that's just part of this conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. The, the incentives that could be granted are, you know, you know, around, like, you know, setbacks or, or building heights, those kinds of things. So they might, you know, get an incentive to, to build that affordable housing by, by, you know, going outside of our code just slightly. But the vast majority of these projects are going to look to our code to see, what does this community want to build? When I talk to developers, oftentimes, they don't care what the building looks like. They're looking at the pro forma, "Does it make sense?" They're looking at, you know, "Can I, can I build this? Do I have the, you know, the, the physical means to build this?" And they really like form-based codes, because they can look at a community and say, "This is what you want me to build? Great, I'll do that for you." So, projects that come in as density bonus, or AB 2011, or whatever, you know, you know, Housing Accountability Act, whatever law that they're using to navigate, to get to a principally permitted pathway for jurisdictions that don't have principally permitted pathways, they're going to be looking at those state laws to supersede local laws. If we have a principally permitted pathway, and we've laid out what we want the, the code to look like, it's not that we're not going to get anything, it's just that we're going to get less with these low, with these high affordability, deep-targeting affordability projects. So I, I just want to be clear, it's not like they would be completely outside of. And I think the question was, how do we structure our, if I, if I got it right? How do we structure our, our benefits program to try and encourage people to follow that pathway, instead of using the density bonus? And I guess my bottom line, I think, no matter what analysis you do, no matter how you look at it, at the very end of the day, the bottom line is going to be that density bonus will always be used by someone who wants to provide additional affordable housing, because it reduces the cost of the project. It, and if, if they don't need to exceed our height limits to, to make their project pencil, and they get the units that they need, they won't exceed our height limits. But they absolutely will, every single time, say, "I'm not providing three of these community benefits, because they impact my bottom line and my project." So, no matter how you slice it, no matter what you look at, no matter, you know, what combination of factors that you look at, if someone's willing to come in and their model is affordable housing, I almost guarantee every single one of those is going to use density bonus to, to take advantage of the, the updated density bonus law that really gives affordable housing producers, you know, some, some leverage. You also have to counterbalance that with, many of the projects that we're doing, at least locally here, have low-income tax credits associated with them. And so there's a whole list of other community benefits that come along with those projects. They have affordable housing, sustainable communities, or infill infrastructure grant, or they have some other grant that's creating community benefit, maybe just not the ones that are on our list. The Sorrel Place provided funding, about half the funding for an electric bus. We now have an electric bus running around our streets. It provided sidewalks, all up and down and around town. It's providing crossings, lit crossings across Samoa. You know, there were improvements to Eighth and Ninth Street, and the list goes on. There were millions and millions of dollars of benefit that came in from that project. So I think us trying to resolve on, is someone going to use density bonus or not, if we have this program, we could certainly evaluate it. We could, we could spend time talking about it. I just think the answer is yes. Some people will use, use density bonus, and yes, some people will provide community benefits, because they're using grant sources that require it. And yes, affordable housing is a community benefit. So, I would rather spend our time working on the other things, but I'm certainly happy to bring this back and give it more detail, if you all want me to. And I'm certainly willing to spend time outside of the meeting to go over any commissioner who wants to dig into this in more detail and flesh it out.
Well, another piece of information that was going to help inform this moving forward, that we already have scheduled for our discussions, is the economic calculator that's going to give us an assessment of what the relative costs are for each of these individual community benefits, and therefore their impact on the viability or buildability of projects. So...
When is that on our agenda?
Well, we have, we have this calculation coming back that is, do you want to weigh in, answer that, David?
Yeah, that's the, I think that's the Turner Center dashboard that you were referring to earlier, which will take into account what our, what our standards are, and how those standards affect the probability of development. But it's not going to answer the question...
By calculating the cost of each individual community benefit, in conjunction with a project.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, so you're talking about the fiscal analysis on the community benefits program?
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm referring to.
Yes, yeah, Bennett mentioned that earlier in his presentation.
So, given that, coming back to the last question we actually had on the table, do we want to see further analysis on this? And I apologize, but I, it's been long enough that I lost track of everyone's vote. My vote is no, I don't want to see more.
Yeah, and based on the conversation that we just had, and the information that the director shared on this subject, I feel like we don't need any more analysis.
That's two for no. Christian, we had a little more conversation. You...
Yeah, I feel, you know, with the coming up information sharing regarding the economic piece, and also what Commissioner Simmons had mentioned as well, in regards of playing it out and seeing how it's going to actually unfold. I think, yeah, I don't think we need, I don't personally need it.
That's three no. No, no. Judith?
Okay. The next item is for parcel dedication of off-street parking. And this is similar to what we saw in the Sorrel Place, where there were some, you know, right-of-way captured by having public easements onto private lands. And I think the point is, you know, should we be creating more parking? And so, does the commission want to strike that as, as an amenity, as a community benefit?
This is under category three, if you're looking for it. Parcel frontage dedication, category number three.
And it would just be to strike just the parking. I think everything else in there is fantastic.
I'm sorry, category three?
Yep, open space and recreation, it's under category three, and it's the third one down. Parcel frontage dedication, and then it would just be the off-street parking that, that Commissioner Simmons is...
Oh, I see.
Talking about.
So, you're suggesting that we just strike the three words, "off-street parking"? Okay.
So is the commission in favor of striking off-street parking for that item? Lehman and Simmons, yes. Tangney, yes. Christian? Yes, I'm a yes. Judith, do you want to vote on that?
I'm, I'm actually neutral, because I, I think if you're trying to attract diverse development and, and business development, that would serve that purpose. So I'm, I'm probably against. I'd like to keep that in there.
Okay, so that's clear.
The next one I had on the list was whether bus passes for employees. And I'm just going to say that, yes, we should do that. That, I think, was envisioned, and it was in error. So if everyone's okay with us adding employees' bus pass program?
Everyone's in support. Employees' bus passes, yes, majority.
The next one is moving above the reach, allowing benefits that go above the reach code. The reach code is likely to be superseded by building code. That's what a reach code is, is that you see the, the building code coming on in the next couple of cycles, and you adopt that locally beforehand. I don't know that we're going to, you know, be able to continue to adopt new reach codes. So, I would say if you want to add above state or reach code, local reach code, as opposed to just replacing it with reach code, because we won't likely have a reach code all the time, then that would be an appropriate amendment to make.
Yeah, I guess I would rephrase it to just say, state or local code.
Okay. Any opposed?
Any opposed to that change? Nope.
Okay. Unbundling parking for rent. Just real quickly on this one, we are, two thoughts. Number one, we're talking about having, at this point anyway, fewer than one parking space per unit, and so...
Identify what category and spot that is.
Yeah, well... Matt, do you recall?
That one is not, that was one of the ones we discussed at the second slide of meeting that didn't get into this list.
Didn't get included. Okay.
There was a couple of, which is, I was going to get to in question three.
Okay, so this is a proposal to add a community benefit of unbundling parking. So the, the two thoughts I have is, number one, if you have fewer than one space per unit, you're almost undoubtedly going to have unbundled parking to begin with, that, you know, there, you're not going to be able to assign those to everyone. And I think developers are going to see this as, you know, a source of additional revenue to charge for that parking. So it may happen anyway, but certainly, I think, you know, the, the idea of unbundling parking where we can is a really good idea. I don't know if that goes in as a standard and you require it. I don't know how we could do that necessarily, and we'd have to evaluate that. So, if you wanted to add it somewhere, I would say the community benefits program is the appropriate place to add it.
So what is the specific question before us? Do we want to add unbundling parking as a community benefit?
Exactly.
In what category would it go under?
Something about transportation or site, site conditions.
That's not really critical for our question, where it would go. I think the question before us is, are you, is the commission in favor of adding a requirement to unbundle parking to the community benefits program? Yes or no? Peter, yes. Matt?
Can't, can't that simply, can we have an option to say it should be district-wide? And just that that has to be part of our standards?
It, it would be covering the entire gateway area. Are, are you saying to only allow that?
So then it wouldn't be part of the community benefits program. It would be a basic requirement in the gateway.
Well, any of these are allowable as a community benefit. And so, in, throughout the entire gateway, it's just structured so that the larger your building is, the more points you have to attain, and the more categories you have to capture under. So, if added to transportation and mobility, there was a community benefit called unbundling parking, then that could be selected by any project throughout the entire gateway area as one of their amenities.
However, if they're likely, as you described, to unbundle parking, because they are only required less than one per space, then we're giving up a community benefit for something that they're just doing anyway.
Although, that is true. There's a couple of things on here that are like that. So I think that really what the, you know, the, the question is, is it important enough as a policy matter that we're actually going to incentivize it, even though we're likely to get it anyway? A perfect example of this, and we've had this conversation before, is, you know, rapid production of housing. Do we want to incentivize housing? Well, if you want to incentivize housing, give them some points for developing it quickly. Is the project building housing, and they're going to do that anyway? Yes. So, you know, it's, it, there's, there are some of these community benefits that are absolutely part and parcel for, you know, for the project. I don't think that that is inconsistent with, with incentivizing the project based on that. So, some of these are going to have, you know, direct cost. If you give up a portion of your property for a park, that's going to have a direct cost to you as a, you know, additional cost to you as a, as a developer. Producing the housing is baked into the cost. That's part of what you're doing. And so, we're saying, "We want you to give us a park, and we want you to give us housing." We want you to give us a park so badly, we're going to give you extra points for doing that. And we want you to give us housing so badly, that we're going to give you points for that, too. So it's, you know, it's, it's, I guess, a, you know, policy decision you all need to make.
So, again, we had two for, two votes in favor of adding unbundling as a community benefit.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. Dan, I, I think, even though there's less than one parking space per unit, it doesn't mean that the parking is unbundled automatically. It still could be bundled with the fancier apartments. So, I think it's necessary to have this in our benefits.
Go ahead, Matt.
I, I suggested it, but I think it's a very low-cost one to the developer, and so it should probably just be like one point. And so that's, that's what I would propose, I guess.
Judith, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. It's a triple subsidy to the developer. Wow, they get to charge rent for something they wouldn't have charged separate rent for. So we have to recognize that all of these community benefits are in fact subsidies to developers.
Okay, that's three in favor. Dan, you're in favor? Christian? Okay, we are unanimous on that one.
I'm going to add the comment that some of the references to being above state standards, adding citywide standards, I'm going to kind of collapse that into the one that you all already voted on, that we'll consider that part and parcel. Transportation, more emphasis on... on, oh, more emphasis on the transportation, I think was Scott's proposal, and so, is everyone acceptable to increase the weighting factors on those?
It was in favor of increasing the weight. I think it was category five.
For the, for the whole category?
Yeah. So, in favor. Two in favor. Three, four, everyone's in favor of that.
Okay, great. We got a unanimous decision. Good job, everyone. Two, two.
Two.
And then the, the last one was kind of more of a comment, but I think we can work on this somehow if you all want us to, is the category seven waste collection component, which was about waste collection design. There's some...
Waste and recycling, I think.
There's, there's some changes in state law related to Senate Bill 1383 that is going to change what we're required to do anyway, and so some of this will be a standard-based in the, the decision-making process.
Yeah, how could you build a building without waste collection and recycling? I, that, that seems...
People have done it in Arcata, and they should, and, and they shouldn't, and so I think that's why it needs to be citywide, and we do have new state standards, so, how does this affect that?
Yeah, it's designed, the, the statement is that it must exceed the minimum city and state requirements, and so, you know, designing recycling areas, adding additional recycling areas to provide for, you know, additional options for, but, so what I'm hearing is, what I heard was, is strike this anyway, or I, I guess the question is, should we strike this? This is one of the, the questions that came up from, from Commissioner Mayor.
I think we should strike it and make it citywide rather than just for the gateway. And, and that's not an option that's been put forward here.
Okay.
That's like a two-part deal. That's strike it here and make it citywide.
Yeah, so right now we're focusing on the gateway plan, and I think we can come back to the, the citywide.
The initial question is, do we want to strike this in regards to the gateway program?
Yes.
Yes? Yes is have it.
Oops. I think it's important that we remind ourselves that these community benefits are something we need to be very protective of how they get their points. I, I know we're all on that page, but I, if, if there's something on here that shouldn't be on here, let's take it off, because as it said in the description, they need to choose from three different categories. Oh, I'll just put in a little, you know, tiny benefit that barely costs the builder anything, and check off that box. You know, I think we've got to be really, really scrutinize these and be stingy about them.
I, I think that's a good point, Dan, although I think when we get our economic analysis of the impacts and costs with each of these community benefits, we'll be in a better position to make that decision moving forward.
Absolutely.
When, when are we going to do that?
David?
I don't, at this point, want to commit to a, a timeline for that, but the, but certainly before it's, it's being approved. You know, we have, we have to get through this work. We wanted to make sure that we had the right, you know, kind of structure, and that we get the, you know, the, the sort of right framework, and, and the right benefits, and then we'll refine it. We'll go back and do that economic analysis. I think before we do the economic analysis, we'll bring it back and, and share it with you again, have a little bit more discussion on it, and then we'll cut, you'll see it again before it's approved.
And all of this going to happen before July?
No.
Oh.
No. This will happen before it's adopted next year. What we're trying to do right now is put together the draft. There's still going to be some, you know, some feedback that we need to gather on it. We recognize that. I mean, it'll be, you know, in July, in June, we're going to release the, the draft form-based code. It'll be out there for public review. We anticipate changes based on public comment, commission's review, et cetera, et cetera. During that timeframe, sort of, on, on similar parallel tracks, we'll be doing this economic analysis of the, the community benefits program.
So does that bring us to the end of this portion of our meeting?
It's all I have.
Okay, wonderful. Then we can let Ben go. Go ahead, Matt.
So just, the, the third question was, are there things missing? And I had pointed out to David that there were a couple of things missing.
Got it. Thank you for bringing us.
And my suggestion is, the next time we see these, that anything added is like yellow highlighted, so we can just jump right to the things that we haven't talked to about before.
Yeah, we, we can, we can absolutely do that. I did want to mention, and I'm not sure if we circled back on this entirely, but there were, and I'll talk with you offline, actually, about this in more detail, but there were items, when the commission went through and did their exercise, there were items that they had moved below the line, and those items that they moved below the line, they recognized were high priority, but they didn't want to see them as community benefits. And I think some of the categories that, that you had mentioned to me the other day fall into that category, so, but this is not the, this is not the end. It's not to say that you can't pull some of those back. You know, you'll have another opportunity to review this.
Great. Then, we're done with Ben today, correct? Before we transition into the bike rack, I just want to see, does anyone else want to, does anyone feel like we need a quick break before we, we've got about another hour left? Keep going, or?
It can take three minutes.
Three-minute break? Yeah, let's, let's take a quick break. We'll come back at 11:30-ish.
All right. Your mic went off.
Your mic went off.
Oops. Thank you. We're back. Now we're really back. All the way back.
Appreciate the discussions so far this morning. I'd like to now bring us back to the items in the land use element, bike rack. David, can you bring those issues back up on the screen so we can all reorient ourselves to where we left off with bike rack items?
Yeah, absolutely. And I do want to point out that I'm actually using the discussion guide, the, the compilation for your Tuesday meeting, just to make sure that I can manage the version control. Your packet has the one that was prepared for today's meeting, but because we're going to be updating it in rapid succession, you know, Tuesday and then again Thursday, I'm just starting with the version that has the public facilities and infrastructure element and public safety element, so I don't have to update two different documents. So this is the bike rack for 42523, or the compilation for 42523, but our bike rack hasn't changed between these two days, so I'm going to jump down to the land use element. And so, again, we went through the items that were in the bike rack. What I'm going to do with this document, eventually, I'd hope to do it by this meeting, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to pull all of the policies that you've already made decisions on, and then put them into a third section. So the first section is new policy that you're working on. The second section is the bike rack, and you'll have the third section, which will be all of the policies that you've already approved, so you have all that information in one document. Apologize if I didn't get to that at this point. But we are now in the bike rack section of the document, and we're on to the land use element. And to Commissioner Mayor's point, you know, these are organized based on the work that staff did to try and implement the framework that you adopted for how to structure these decisions. But there is some arbitrariness in the way that the, the items went onto the list. I tried to mix them up, so if multiple commissioners provided comments that not all one commissioners come first, and then the other commissioner comes second, I tried to give a mix. And so if there are items in this land use element bike rack, which has, I believe, like 20 items that you want to make, oh, nine total policies here, and then there were quote-unquote "ideas for discussion." So the reason why we had another category here was because not all of the comments that you made to me had a firm, solid recommendation for change. For instance, this first one, LU1K, support and revitalize other existing neighborhood and commercial activity areas. This section promotes, this is the words of the commissioner, this section promotes travel by walking, biking, and transit. One of its intentions is to reduce vehicle miles traveled, yet it also encourages improvement in parking. Do we want to also encourage the conversion of parking lots to other uses such as housing, walkways, playgrounds, et cetera? So not a, not a specific language to change, but a discussion, so I put those into this ideas for discussion category. So, to that end, with these nine policies that you're going to review next, if there are policies that any of you feel like are more important, that you want to make sure you get to, that we don't go chronologically, let me know, and I'll jump to those. Otherwise, we'll start with bullet number one and move through them in order.
This is mine, and I feel like I've made the pitch like three separate times, so I have to just jump right into conversation.
So just, just to be clear, the proposal is to strike in LU1C, to strike this, to make, reduce or eliminate minimum parking requirements citywide, and then to strike the rest of it where it talks about areas where transit and act, transportation are planned.
Does, does anyone on the commission have, object to striking that language? Okay. Next. Peter?
That one is mine, and I did not suggest wording, because I wanted to hear what people thought about this, but there were two sections in land use two B and land use two C where we would have the opportunity to encourage housing for all citizens of Arcata, including currently unhoused people. And we did not mention that explicitly in the land use document, and I thought we should. So, I did not suggest actual wording, but I could if we choose to do that.
I interpreted this one as the bold language here. City encourages housing for all, including currently unhoused people, to be the specific language you were recommending.
That would be fine with me.
Do any commissioners have an objection to adding that language, that specific language change? All in favor? Majority anyways?
Yeah, there, can I suggest some other modifications to LU2B, as long as we're talking about it? I submitted those in writing.
Sure.
The first one is to change the wording of housing consumers to residents. Housing consumers is real estate talk, and it's not appropriate for our plan. The second one is it refers to in higher-density developments, and I would suggest specifying that that would be medium and high-density developments, so that we know what we're talking about there.
For the inclusionary zoning requirement, the proposal is to set these at, you know, a certain specific unit count, and so I, I would say that it's not necessarily the zoning district, if I understood you correctly, to say residential medium and residential high. I, I think this satisfies for policy language, and that I would, I would recommend you keep it the way that it is. I'm not sure I caught the first one that you mentioned.
It refers to housing consumers right next to your cursor there. That's an unfortunate choice of word.
What do you want that to say?
Residents.
Some may not be residents yet, I guess is why we use the term consumers.
Well, then I, well, they will be residents if they're living in those houses, and when we talk about housing consumers, I, I don't know that we want to see our community as a community of consumers. We want to see ourselves as a community of, of...
Would it satisfy if we dropped this word and didn't replace it? It says the same thing without that word?
Choices for housing in terms of types of units.
Yeah.
That would be fine.
All in favor? Anyone opposed to dropping consumers for whatever reason? No. No objections to make that change?
Okay, and, and do you want to keep this language or modify it?
Is there anyone that's concerned about keeping the language as it currently reads?
As it currently reads, we don't know what we're talking about.
This is a policy-level statement that you can then refine through implementation, and we'll be bringing back inclusionary zoning standards for citywide for you to review and consider.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so let's move on.
Okay, I'm going to try and remember to reflect that green highlighted section in your final decisions, even though it wasn't on the, the bike rack. So did I catch correctly that this is, I'm turning this LU2B proposal for all, including currently unhoused people, green?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Aglands? LU6C?
I think that was probably me.
I think that was probably me.
No, it was me.
Okay, Peter.
That's way better.
Let's hear what you got.
I read this, and I saw riding. And as a person who rides a lot, I wanted to prevent riding of motorized four-wheelers or one or two-wheelers, because I think they're not in keeping with having recreational activities that are good for other people, the hikers and bird watchers. So I suggest putting in that word, non-motorized.
So the city does currently have ordinance preventing certain motorized vehicles on specific trails. I would caution against having something as broad brush as this, because we do have some folks who use assisted bicycles or other assisted, you know, vehicles, you know, wheelchairs, that sort of thing, that are motorized technically. And so I could see somebody quibbling over whether those are allowed. Certainly, we don't want, you know, motorcycles in the forest.
Good question. There is a difference between, you know, the electric assisted bicycles and the fully motorized bicycles as well. And our code doesn't currently make that distinction. So I wonder if we can put a recommendation in there that would allow for, you know, motorized wheelchairs or electric assisted vehicles without allowing for the operation of a fully motorized vehicle. I was almost run over, for example, twice last week by motorized bicycles, which technically, you know, I don't know, somewhere in the middle. And so there's got to be a way to adjust that citywide.
Yeah, first off, if you're referring to the same fellow I'm referring to out in the forest, I want to tell him personally to stop riding that bike out there right now. It's dangerous.
Yeah, once in the forest and once in the marsh.
Yeah, so we do have, I think I know the marsh one too. Stop. The... I think our ordinance does. I'll come back with some information or send you out some information. I think our ordinance does specify the type of bike. It has a mile per hour limit, and it has to be pedal assisted to be on those trails. Many of these vehicles are not pedal assisted. They're push-button throttles, and those are not allowed on our trails.
So how do we include that in this, in this statement, in LU6C?
I would offer that you don't make this change, and that you keep it the way that it's currently written, and then rely on the interpretation of this policy to reflect in the ordinances with the way that they currently are. I wouldn't just say no non-motorized wouldn't exclude it to non-motorized riding. There are other forms of riding that are technically motorized.
Can I... It's not so much about the motor. It's about like compatibility with other uses. So can we just change it to like compatible riding? You know, and it's vague, but it also captures the idea that we're trying to do.
Fine with me. I really, I mean, I spent a lot of time on trails here. And I, you know, I know what I mean. I don't know how to get it into this ordinance.
I would suggest asking staff to figure out how to word that that'll stand up legally, because, you know, other communities are dealing with this too. They've dealt with it with, you know, what if you have a push-button bike, but you're not operating it in its motorized mode? If it's not being operated in its motorized mode, it's fine. But if it is being operated with the push button, it's not fine. So I'd like to throw that to staff to revise.
I think staff can probably perhaps suggest some language, although I would say that the example you just gave would be covered under the term compatible, because then it would become incompatible. So...
I'll also just say, this is the policy level stuff, and it's the ordinance that has to get sort of into the nitty-gritty of...
I think that's why David's suggesting that we keep it as is.
Yeah, because riding can also mean like equestrian as well, like riding horse. So just to put that into context as well, broadening that definition even further. So, you know.
Compatibility is extremely subjective. And so I think that there are ways of wording this to make sure that we know what we're doing.
I think I get the, I think I get the gist. And what I would say is that I like the idea that staff will work on this language. I'll get together with our environmental services staff, and we'll try and come back with something. But I'm seeing, you know, twinkles from everyone. We're ready to turn this one green?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I believe this one's yours, Judith. Streamlined review.
Okay, I think we talked about the streamlined review stuff already today, which is very handy. And I do think that we should keep in mind, and I guess take this off the table for now, that whatever kind of streamlined review we adopt for the gateway is probably something similar we should consider for the other opportunity zones. If we don't, it's going to be super, super confusing if we have a different kind of streamlined review for each opportunity zone. And it will drive people crazy. So I would...
I think that's a good point.
Take this off for right now, but just to keep that in mind as we get to the land use code updates later on.
That's a great point. Let's take it off for now, but have city staff keep in mind for consistency as other strategic infill projects come before the commission. Let's keep language consistent, thresholds consistent. Next item.
Encourage Valley West growth as a major community center?
I think that was me as well. We, again, don't know what that streamlining would do, high-density residential infill development streamlined. And I think that sort of comes along with the previous item, that we don't know what we're talking about with that policy. And so I think until we do, we should get it off the table or further define it somewhere later in our process.
Okay, let's leave that for now and move on to the next item.
So we're not... Red means that we voted no on it. Gray is going to mean that we're holding it over. Whoops, what did I just do?
I would get it off the table until we know what we're talking about with the rest of them. And the fact that it identifies Valley West, but not the other infill opportunity zones, I think is problematic.
Okay, I think that's because this one specifically addresses Valley West, and there are other policies that address the other areas. But I... So this is going red. Everyone's comfortable with this going red. Okay. Okay, Commercial Central. I believe this was yours as well, Commissioner Mayor.
Okay, Commercial Central Zone will continue to have no upper density limit. I'd like to add for conditions of approval must avoid dangerous effects on public safety there. And I understand that that may bump some projects out of, you know, a ministerial approval potential later on. But I do believe that when we envision, you know, big buildings coming in that will add a lot of traffic and a lot of just people to the mix in particular locations, I think we need to take into account those safety considerations and build them into conditions of approval. What we're doing is we're sort of opening it wide up, and I'm not sure that we have other types of processes in the city that will allow us to get at those localized safety concerns for particular projects.
Peter, go ahead.
I have a question. Does having no upper density limit mean that, for example, there could be a 12-story building in this zone?
No, there are height limitations, but no density limitations in the Commercial Central. Commercial Central is also an area that we'll be coming back to as sort of one of, you know, reviewing some of the zoning in there. And so you have another opportunity for this. I guess what I would say to this particular suggestion is that you already have sort of public health and safety findings that have to be made. And so we can incorporate this and maybe mirror those public health and safety findings, maybe even more generally in policy that applies to all zoning districts, and have some, you know, public health and safety language in there.
Can we add that as public health and safety findings as part of this policy right now?
Certainly, yeah.
I mean, I think, while I appreciate your concerns, Judith, I hear that. I think it feels a little overly broad. If we could perhaps reference existing public, you know, health and safety codes that might help narrow it down a little bit and give us a way to maybe vote on something a little more specific.
Yeah, the findings are actually really broad. The finding that you typically make, like if you do a use permit, or, you know, if you're issuing, you know, building permit is that, you know, the project is not injurious to public health and safety. And so there's, you know, a lot of discretion involved in discretionary decision as to, you know, what that actually means. If you're going to deny a project on that finding, then, you know, you ought to have some pretty significant evidence to back it up, I would offer. But in general, I mean, I think this is a principle that is absolutely embedded in all urban planning, that you are not creating situations that are injurious to public health and safety. I think it's fine to recognize that in policy.
Okay, so you are making a recommendation for language to change item six, or are you saying that given existing sort of municipal code, we leave it as is and trust that it's covered?
Either way, yeah, either way.
Is everyone comfortable, given the understanding that there's municipal codes addressing this, leaving the language as is? Christian? As is, Commissioner Mayor Simmons? Okay, I think we're fine with the language as is. Let's move on to the next item.
Wait, so green means you are changing it to the suggested language?
Yes. You're... Okay, maybe I misunderstood. Did you just take a vote that you're satisfied with the existing language or with the proposed language?
We're taking a vote that we are satisfied with the existing language. Is that what everyone understood?
Okay, I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks for the catch.
Okay, industrial public facility land use classifications, multi-part question here. I believe this may be yours, Peter? No?
That was mine.
Oh, it's yours, okay.
Yeah, about educational, cultural, and religious uses aren't listed for either of our industrial zones. And what I'm wondering is whether that would prohibit, basically, school-aged kids' facilities in industrial zones, because it's not listed as an allowable use.
Yes.
Okay. The second question is, there were religious uses listed in that category. I'm wondering why that's mentioned separately there at all. And it's not mentioned, it doesn't, I couldn't find it in our current land use code. Was that added there for a reason?
I don't believe that this was added. This was from our existing land use element, these tables here. And we do list religious uses in the table here, and then we have in the land use code zoning districts where, you know, churches, synagogues, mosques, et cetera, you know, houses of worship are allowed. I can't cite verbatim where they are, but, you know, residential zoning districts, I believe, and then maybe public facilities. Actually, they're...
Okay.
These sites here are where they're allowable.
Can you go up again, so we can see that chart? Okay, I think I was referring...
To the industrial one?
To the industrial one, yeah.
Find the next one. Let's see. Yeah, okay. Yeah, public facilities, it's allowed, but industrial sites, it's not?
Okay, so one of the things I'm wondering is, why are we considering religious uses as public facilities? I don't think that we should. Most of those... We have no way to regulate religious uses under our constitution. And I'm just wondering why we've listed them there.
You know, that's just a holdover. I wasn't involved in those conversations, why public facilities was considered, you know, for religious uses. My guess would be because they are public gathering kind of activity. There are some, although the city holds, you know, the vast majority of public facility zone properties, there are some privately-held public facility zone properties. And certainly, a church could come in and say, hey, we want to buy this property. We rezone it public facility, so we can establish a church on it, and we could consider that. I don't know if we have any churches that are currently on public facility properties, but... So I don't know how it would affect existing non-conforming conditions.
I'd prefer not to mention religious uses at all, because that refers not only to structures, but to activities. And I don't think that we have the right to legislate on those. And by saying that they are allowed or not allowed, then we would end up quibbling about which religious uses are allowed.
I don't think we've ever quibbled over which religious uses are allowed, and we've interpreted it broadly. And I think that if we don't list them as allowable uses, they will be not allowed. So I think it's probably wise to list them as allowable.
We don't have the right to not allow them.
I'd like to hear from Commissioner Figueroa.
Yeah, I would say, you know, a great example of a public facility that's listed as a public facility is the Veterans Memorial Facility up here at the top of the hill. And there's definitely a church there on Sundays, or they've been doing, you know, or they have that, they lease that space ultimately for religious use. So, you know, I don't know. This is all kind of slippery slope sort of stuff. So, and whether it's compatible or not compatible, you know, I guess it's a matter of like how we want to actually voice and decide that. But yeah, there is public facilities that are zoned. Yeah, there's land use purposes that are zoned that way. So, I don't know. I don't, I can go either way in regards of whether it's, you know, we call it out for religious uses or not, then, you know, for cultural, you know, then it goes, you know, it's kind of a slippery slope, where we decide to draw the line.
Which is why we probably shouldn't mention it at all. I think we can identify public gathering halls without mentioning religious uses, and remembering that some religious uses are not in structures at all. And I think what we're doing here is we're getting into an area where the city's rights to legislate are limited anyway. And we would probably do well to stay away from that.
Yeah, let's take a poll.
Which direction is least likely to get the city in any kind of litigation over terminology?
I would have to consult with our city attorney to let you know that. I do know that...
On that, I would specifically point them to Ralupa, because we're getting close to, and I don't actually know which direction is better, but it is like a tricky area.
Yeah, I can tell you that we've tested this before on a couple of different projects, and religious... and Religious, and Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act is, does give a lot of discretion to, you know, to churches to be able to decide how to use their assets, and does provide for land use limitations, or limitations on land use authority, but it's not complete. We have never run into trouble with regulating churches to date. I'm not sure that it's an issue, but can certainly bring it back to, you know...
Can I, can I bring up the fact that one, at least one of the churches in our area has an extremely extensive site? If they decided that providing high-density apartment buildings on that site is part of their religious mission, under this, they could basically just claim that religious uses are allowed. Therefore, yeah, we're, we're, we're going to go for that. Bye.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but...
This is, there's, there's messy case law from many locations around the country, and especially from California. It passed, it, it, it provided for an enormous amount of housing development in San Francisco, for example.
The, the Religious Land Use Institutionalized Persons Act isn't based on whether or not the property is zoned appropriately for religious uses. It's based on whether or not a church or religious institution owns that property. And so, you know, the, I guess what I meant when I said I don't necessarily agree with that is that I don't think that we're necessarily addressing the problem that you're concerned about by removing these. But I don't have an, you know, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I would suggest you call the question and decide to change it or not, and then I can, you know, seek guidance from our city attorney based on the decision that you make, and I'll report back to you.
I'd like to hear who, is everyone comfortable, given this discussion and staff input, with leaving this language as it is?
Yeah, it doesn't seem like there's a compelling argument either way, and I sure would like to move on.
Okay, so that's, I'll take that as a yes. Christian?
I don't have a, you know, I don't have a...
Are you okay with the language as it is?
Yeah, I'm okay with the language as it is.
Peter?
I'm not voting. I...
Abstain.
I don't know enough.
Matt?
I think it's been working.
Okay, I'm in, I'm in favor of keeping the language as it is, and I hear that Judith is opposed for all the reasons.
Okay, and I'll, I'll check with Nancy and report back what I find.
I think the urban agriculture question that came next was also mine. Industrial sites don't list urban agriculture as a use. And does, does that mean that it would not be allowed on industrial general or industrial limited sites?
Yeah, the way it's currently drafted, urban agriculture would not be allowed on IL and IG.
Okay, I'd, I'd suggest adding that as an allowable use. The hazards of allowing urban agriculture on those sites are basically consumer issues rather than land use issues. And considering what is allowed on those sites, I, I would think that adding urban agriculture would be relatively benign and quite desirable in some cases.
It's interesting to consider that there is cannabis growing in, on those sites, right? Some of them. But that's not considered an agricultural use, right?
I mean, yes, I, I would.
Yeah, I think it's defined by the, by the state's agriculture, what is it? I'm drawing a blank. It is considered ag use. Yeah, it's ag. Cannabis is ag.
So we are already allowing it?
Well, as long as it's outdoor versus indoor cultivation, and those are broken down at the county and state level by different permit types.
That's true.
One of the things that we've encountered in, in terms of thinking what can happen on our agricultural sites is that there is a fair amount of building and infrastructure allowed in association with agriculture. In many cases, those are actually fairly industrial uses, and I think given, given that, it seems really silly not to have urban agriculture as an approvable use on those industrial sites, and then it would be...
So is anyone opposed to that change?
Yeah, is anyone opposed to adding that? Okay, none opposed. Keep moving.
Judith, the last one I hear is residential uses allowed in the IL zone?
Where, where are we?
At number C.
Oh. I, I guess the assumption here is that IL uses are relatively benign as far, as far as impacts to residents would go. But I'm, I'm wondering what is allowed in those areas and whether we can assume that that's compatible with residential use. There are a number of possible uses that would involve toxic chemicals and, and noise and stuff like that.
Right now, the only uses in IL zones, only residential uses that are allowed in IL zones are caretakers unit, and then I believe there's one other kind of like group housing that could get a use from it. And then in the IL two zone, the Creamery District Zone, which will, you know, be subsumed into the gateway area, planned zoning, because it would provide for more uses than the IL two does. The IL two zoning allows for residential, there's tons of residential already in the Creamery District, and so, so I think that's what this was trying to get at, is that there are some allowable residential uses on your traditional industrial limited zoning district, not like multifamily housing, but more like caretaker unit. I think that's what it's trying to accommodate the table.
I'm, I'm wondering if we could just keep that in mind, so that when we're looking at the land use code, we can be much more specific.
So it's currently codified in the land use code.
Okay, and I know it came up also in the Housing for the Homeless provisions, where I think emergency housing was added to the industrial limited zones a while ago. Is that not correct?
There are two parcels that are zoned industrial that have the Housing for Homeless Combining Zone on them. Did I catch your question correctly?
Yeah, and I think it was the SB two adjustments years and years ago...
Yeah.
...that would open those up to housing of more than one kind, because the definitions have changed since we adopted that.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd, you know, appreciate the opportunity to prepare for a more lengthy discussion around that topic, because it's, it's pretty convoluted.
I guess I'm wondering if...
That would be, that would be great.
Otherwise, is there a specific language change or proposal that we're looking at right now, or just kind of airing this as a general discussion topic?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if I can turn this either gray for, we've, or, you know, gray for we've, we've dealt with it.
Is everyone opposed to gray for this item?
I will just say, doesn't gray sometimes mean it's coming back later and sometimes mean we've dealt with it? I'm just...
Yeah, maybe, no, gray should mean that we're coming back later. I'm sorry, thank you. I don't know which color to put this. How about if we call it...
I think we should bring it back with, with discussions of what we're going to do with the land use code in general, because it...
Okay, we'll call it gray. Okay, state mandated housing production. I feel like we've...
Just for a quick touch base, how many more items do we have?
We have two more in the policy area, and then we have several that are in the...
Okay, and just for everyone's time check, we've got about 20 minutes left, so we'll get as far as we get today.
There are, there are 10 that don't have any specific policy recommendations associated with them. They're just open-ended questions.
Well, let's try and get through the ones that do have specific policy change recommendations.
Yep, so we're on number eight, state mandated housing production.
Whose is this?
Judith, is yours?
Yeah, that, that was mine. The proposed language for LU one Q, which I'm trying to find over here. P, that was the additional language that you had suggested, David, that wasn't originally included, but then you added in in a subsequent running draft. It was very explicit as to the, the means of achieving housing goals, and I had suggested that we simply end it with to meet both state objectives and city need for housing without the long list of ways that we would do that, since they're stated elsewhere. In other words, put a period at the end of development and eliminate that produces high-density infill housing and mixed-use or residential projects in appropriately zoned and designated areas. We've kind of said that, so I would just appreciate, yeah.
Is anyone opposed to making that change to this language? No, no opposed to.
Uh, this one, oh. Yeah, that one's me. So this came out of the sea level rise discussion, and, you know, one of the best things we could do to mitigate sea level rise is to convert former marsh, or former tidelands back to former tidelands. And so I just wanted to add this policy language, saying that the city supports that.
Alma McDaniel Slough. Is anyone opposed to making that change? I think that's a great idea.
That's good. And isn't that going to be in the local coastal program anyway?
I was just going to suggest that I'll have to compare this with policy in the local coastal program. I, I think this is a good policy. I think we want to support it absolutely. It may belong there instead of here, and so it sounds like we're getting twinkles. I'm going to turn this green, but it may show up in the local coastal element instead of here.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, that gets us through everything that has a specific policy proposal.
Correct.
My, my vote, given that it's Saturday and we have two more meetings next week, would be to cut our discussions off and wrap up for the day. As it's Saturday, is there anyone that's opposed to that course of our...
Can I just, I, I'm in favor of that, but I have a suggestion, and I want to run it by staff, is that if anyone submitted one of these ideas for discussion and wanted to submit it as like a more streamlined proposal, could they do that?
I was going to make the same suggestion, is that if you, if you want to come back to these, I would highly recommend that you make a specific proposal in the way that you've done the, the other policy pitches. The, you just went through nine policies. You did good work. You, you approved some, you rejected others. If we had to discuss what the outcomes of those were going to look like without being able to see them in advance, each of those discussions would have taken as long as this whole meeting did. So if you want to talk about these, it's, it's up to you, but if you want to approve them, I would say, yeah, revise them, send them to me. I'll update this with your new proposal, and that'll streamline your discussions.
Great, I love that. So if anyone brought one of those forward and wants to rethink it and attach a specific policy proposal, that would be great. As, as chair, I'm definitely leery of opening circular, open-ended discussions about some of this stuff, given, given the amount of work that we need to do. Judith?
Can I ask a scheduling question? As part of the land use element, there were a number of proposals for rezoning, which we haven't talked about. Members of the public certainly have. When is that happening? Or, because, the, the reason is that if there's something that we adopt in, or recommend to adopt in the land use element, that means it will come up later on when we talk about the land use code. If we recommend against it, then it will not likely. So when are we going to talk about those?
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd hoped we would get to some of these discussions today. Many of the policy, or the zoning changes you've seen multiple times, many of them you've already recommended. Several of them you have not seen multiple times or had a chance to really deliberate on them. And so, you know, we're hearing from the public, some, you know, concerns about different areas. You know, I want the commission to be able to, you know, provide direction of staff to, you know, how to amend the, the draft document here and, you know, make that recommendation to the city council. And also to give an opportunity to fully discuss why, you know, certain decisions were made, so that you're able to, to incorporate that into your recommendation. So with that background, I guess I would say that my hope is that we can get to this in, you know, one of our, our next couple of meetings. If we're coming back to some of these other bike rack issues on the land use element, that would be an opportune time to get into this material as well. You know, certainly, this is one of the, you know, most critical decisions that you're going to make, what the land use map is going to look like, where these zoning districts actually apply, and so you're going to absolutely have a conversation around that. So, fingers crossed, we can make good work in the circulation discussion on Thursday next week, and then we can start digging into this material again. Or, you know, the public safety and infrastructure elements, you know, really had, you know, some, some very targeted suggestions from, from commissioners. It's, it's possible, even though we have several agenda items for Tuesday, that we can start in on those at that time. So, next week, hopefully, if not next week, then we're definitely going to have to schedule some time to get back to these.
When should members of the public come to speak at our meeting about these rezoning suggestions? Because I...
I, I would encourage folks to, you know, speak on these matters at, you know, at every meeting if they wish, to write you letters, to write you emails. You know, you're hearing it from them. We've heard, you know, some really good points of view on, you know, some of these zoning changes, the AR, you know, projects here, or parcels here, rather. You know, many people have spoken on, we've had a couple of people speak on, you know, the St. Louis Craftsman's Mall area. So you all are hearing those. We, at this point, because of the way that the, the projects are, or the, the process is working, we don't have a specific date that we're noticing these. People will have to look on the agenda and see, you know, is this coming up at that time as a specific agendized item, and/or tune into, you know, the meetings on Tuesday and Thursday to see if you get to them. I can't predict whether or not you will get through your materials on Tuesday and Thursday. I would love to tell people that's when you're going to talk about it, but it's, it's really out of any of our control to be able to predict that.
Can we commit to a time when we will address these specific rezoning suggestions? Because I, I know that members of the public have come in several times when we never got around to those items.
Let me, let me ask the commission, would you like to commit to a time to address these land use map questions? Legendize it.
So next week's meetings are already agendized, so we're talking about the, perhaps the meeting after that?
You have on your agenda the ability to go back into any of these bike rack issues, any of them. It's all in the agenda, and so this material is in, in your agenda for Tuesday, it's in your agenda for Thursday. The specific focus of the staff report doesn't incorporate this, but if you want to say right here and now, hey, Tuesday, we're going to talk land use, we're going to dedicate an hour to talking land use, I can't tell you that's what you're going to do, but you all can.
I mean, I, I kind of like the flexibility of us being able to work through our scheduled items and then get back into the bike rack as we did today, as time allows, but I would like to hear everyone's input on that.
Well, I think Judith is making an excellent point, that this is a topic that the public is going to want to be here for if they are, you know, already writing letters and speaking. And we're all losing track a little bit. I'm thinking back on, oh, I'm going to have to go back through old emails that they've emailed to, old letters that they've emailed to us to be reminded of the concerns. So it would be nice to target a date. If, is Thursday work? I mean, could we just say?
Yeah, given that we have a project for Tuesday that we need to review, let's, is everyone okay with putting this on the agenda for Thursday for our special meeting?
Sure.
Any opposed?
I'll just say that...
And I, I'll just say that I, I agree with both of you that there's enough interest so that we should have a time served.
Okay, so we'll, we'll message that out through our e-notifications and et cetera that Thursday, in addition to what's on the agenda already, that you plan to get back to the land use bike rack. So if you've got land use questions, come then.
Thursday, the 27th.
Correct.
Thursday, the 27th, yes.
Can I suggest that it comes first in the agenda so that we get to it while people are here on the day that we told them to come?
It's okay with me.
All right.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that. I think we did get a lot done today. I'm glad that we checked off a number of items off the bike rack. I think we're going to try to continue to keep our deliberations moving and continue to do that. Remaining items, having been addressed, we will move to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members? Any correspondence from staff?
May I just ask, is our new commissioner expected at Tuesday's meeting?
He said he would join us on Tuesday. Any correspondence from staff?
No.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.